Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Town council meeting Thursday, December 17th. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of housekeeping. Eileen Cabanel, the town manager, will not be here this evening because of illness, but Paul McCauley is certainly going to be able to fill us all in, and what she was going to. Finley Roth House, as well as Dan Dwyer are coming, they're just going to be a couple of minutes late. Oh, I guess he really is on time. Good evening, Council Dwyer. Okay, announcements. The town offices will be closing at 1:00 PM on Thursday, December 24th, and will be closed on Friday, December 25th, for the Christmas holiday. The offices will also be closed on Friday, January 1st, for the observance of New Year's Day. The transfer station will be open on Thursday, December 24th. Following dates for meetings, Thursday, January 7th, at 6:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room, is a budget meeting, this is budget month. Monday, January 11th, at 6:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room, another budget meeting. On Thursday, January 14th, at 7:00 PM here in the Thornton Room, a regular council meeting. Thursday, January 21st, at 6:00 PM, a budget meeting again here in the Thornton Room. Monday, January 25th, at 6:00 PM, another budget meeting in the Thornton Room. And Thursday, January 28th, at 7:00 PM, another regular council meeting. During this last meeting, the budget will be finalized if necessary. Just for your information, the public hearing related to the budget will be scheduled for February 11th. Without objection, I'm going to do a little moving of the agenda. Even though having all these people in the audience is really nice, I know you don't want to hang around for a lot of our superfluous chatter, so we're going to go right to recognitions, the recognition of employees for the years of service to the town of Merrimack. I'm assuming that's what most of you are here for, not to hear us talk about anything else. So, without further ado, let me get my list. I'm going to stand up here. Yeah, okay. Some of the recipients are unable to attend this evening's presentation, but we wish to thank the council and the public for their recognition. Okay, Fire Department. The presentation's going to be done by Assistant Chief Boardman, so why don't you come all up? The 20-year plaque for Lieutenant Thomas Dalton, date of hire was 7/21/95. And be kind now.
Thank you to the council, friends and family, everyone that gathered, obviously. We're here tonight for recognitions of a lot of town employees, there's a lot of, obviously, service, great length of time to a lot of individuals, so congratulations to all of them. I got selected or volunteered to talk about Tom Dalton, Lieutenant here in Merrimack, for his 20 years of service. Yeah, why don't you come on up, Tom? Tom was hired full-time in July of 1995 and promoted to Master Firefighter in July of 2000. He's promoted to Lieutenant November of 2014.
First year, not so bad.
Yeah. Lieutenant Dalton is an EMTI and is also a Certified Firefighter III, Company Officer I and II, and a Hazardous Material Technician. He also holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Industrial Engineering from the University of Massachusetts Lowell. He currently serves as the Seashift Lieutenant and is the department's Forestry Officer, which basically oversees and coordinates all the, anything doing with the forestry trucks, the forestry hose, tools, equipment. So, we like to say, he's done a great job with that, but he's basically in charge of twigs and branches. Tom is a very proud family man. His lovely wife Marlene's here, and their two oldest, Patrick and Caitlin, their youngest, Matthew, football practice tonight, so he's a more important thing to do. But, when not working, Tom, they're always out on family adventures. I know camping is one of Tom's favorite family's activities. In fact, I've sat around the fire ring with him and solved world problems on more than one occasion. So, if I could digress just a little bit, it's no secret that, in the firehouse culture, there is some storytelling that goes on. And Lieutenant Dalton is a legend when it comes to storytelling. His sense of timing, his delivery, when he's speaking or telling a story, everyone hangs on every word. The astonishing part about that is with Tom's stories, they're all true. So, in all seriousness, Lieutenant Dalton has been a great firefighter, and now Lieutenant for this community. His ability to maintain focus, remain steady and calm in emergency situation is a testament to his quiet confidence and is an asset not only to the men and women he serves with and supervises, but the entire town of Merrimack. I am very proud to have served with him for the last 20 years and hope it is many more. Congratulations, Tom.
And the plaque reads, 20-year Service Award Presented to Lieutenant Thomas Dalton. In recognition of 20 years of service and as an employee of the town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department, it is a pleasure to present you with this plaque. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to duty.
Thank you for your years.
I'd like to stand next to him. Not here this evening is Assistant Chief Richard Pearson, who's going to be receiving a 25-year watch. The following are not here, but I want to be able to say their names publicly. For our 20-year, Master Patrolman John A. Doudash, date of hire 12/31/95, is going to be receiving a 20-year plaque. Lieutenant Matthew Talton, date of hire 7/21/95, is also going to be receiving a 20-year plaque. Retiring Paul A. Trepanay, date of hire 9/9/85, is actually retiring, or is retired?
Retiring.
Retiring. And he has already received his clock at the recent Employee Recognition Breakfast. Retired Judith A. York, date of hire 1/28/85, has also received her 30-year clock, and she's in North Carolina or somewhere. Oh, well, I guess she's not in North Carolina.
I'm in South Carolina.
Okay, but you already received your clock, right? Congratulations. Just making sure here. They like to throw one things to try to catch me. Okay, and Chief Doyle is going to be presenting a 30-year clock to retiring Lieutenant Daniel Edmonds, and today was his last day, and they actually made him stay to the end of the day. So, Chief Doyle.
Good evening, everyone, and certainly my congratulations go to all the employees whom you've just heard have been recognized for their indebted service to the town, and congratulations Lieutenant Dalton for your 20-year recognition as well. We're here tonight to recognize Dan for 30 years of service, and it seems like just yesterday when Dan and I were hired by then-Captain Mulligan, who took a risk and put an ad in the Lowell Sun way, way back then, and a few of us from Massachusetts came up and applied, and here we are, 30 years later. Danny was hired in September of 1985 and went to the 74th New Hampshire Police Standards and Training Academy. He's here tonight with his wife Pam, his daughter Melissa, his son Danny, and his two granddaughters, Ella and Annabelle. Something that I think every dad and granddad has to be proud of. Like I said before, Danny is another Massachusetts native, and there were a few of us that got hired at the same time, and I think Danny will agree that we have absolutely no regrets making the move north of the line into New Hampshire. Danny served the community and the police department as a patrolman, a detective, a master patrolman, a patrol sergeant, and a patrol lieutenant. He's always been one who has really stepped up to fill a void, and when we recognized there was a void relative to our technology and our computer skills in terms of somebody being able to coordinate all that, Danny was the one that we tapped into because he came to us expressing a desire to work in that vein. He was also our Accident Investigation Team Commander, was an Honor Guard founding member, worked diligently with the vendor for our identikit training to make sure that our officers were all as well-trained as they should be, extremely trained in a number of areas. He's got an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Hesser College, attended Babson College, and graduated from the New England Institute of Law Enforcement Management, has over 2,500 hours of in-service training over the last 30 years, was Police Officer of the Year in 1996, received the Meritorious Service Award, the Chief's Achievement Award, the Life Saving Award, several distinguished unit actions, the Purple Heart for being injured on duty, and the Exceptional Service Award. He's worked diligently with our computer vendor to make sure that the system is updated to the point where it's tweaked necessarily to allow our officers to do the work that they need to do to continually, effectively, and efficiently serve the folks here in the community of Merrimack. He worked to develop a problem-solving model, again, through a grant with Michigan State University on a project regarding domestic violence. He also wrote a paper way, way back when he was promoted to Sergeant, and it was titled, "Why I Want to Be a Merrimack Police Sergeant." Interestingly enough, though, even before he became that individual who we tapped into for the coordinator of our technology direction and our vision, Danny wrote this. He wrote, "Relative to technology, using these concepts and lessons learned to the community's benefit because they are part of the problem-solving equation." And that really sums up what Danny's commitment and level of his dedication has been to not only the police department, but to everybody in the community. And as you heard today, it was Danny's last day on the job, and it was a nostalgic time, it was a melancholy time, and when Danny leaves, Danny doesn't necessarily just leave with the knowledge and skills and abilities that he's learned and developed over the last 30 years, he also leaves with an institutional memory of the Merrimack Police Department. And that's something that, we can backfill the skills, we can backfill the knowledge that you learn and the training, but we can't backfill that level of institutional knowledge and history that Danny's going to walk away with. So, we want to make sure that we're connected with you, Danny, for a very, very long time. On behalf of everybody at the police department and the Merrimack community, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, Chief.
You're a true friend.
Thank you.
And I know that we'll be in touch many, many times.
Take care.
I know we're on a timetable here, so I'll keep it short, just a half an hour. I'd like to recognize a few people in the room. Chief, thank you for those kind words. They meant a lot, they really did. But I'd like to also recognize former Chief Bill Mulligan, the reason I'm here, the reason a lot of us are here, Captain Mike Doudash, Captain Pete Albert, but also in the audience, Mrs. Helen Cross, her daughter Tiffany, and her two granddaughters, Pat Murphy. These are people that I've come to know in the town. Helen I met through her husband Brad, who worked for our police department. He was a great friend and a good police officer, and, you know, after he retired, I had many a coffee, and I still do, at the kitchen table. And, but mostly, you know, I've had a good time in Merrimack, and to the citizens of Merrimack, thank you for allowing me to serve you. It's been a good ride, I enjoyed it. But I'd like to say to my wife Pam and my kids, if it wasn't for you behind me, you know, you've gone the 30 years with me, thank you very much. Okay, Paul McCauley, Captain Peter Albert, and Captain Michael Doudash, this'll be interesting, will present the 30-year clock to Chief Mark Doyle, date of hire 8/11/85.
I want to thank everybody for coming and congratulate everybody for their achievements over the years. There's a lot of years of experience in this room. Over the last 11 years, it's been my pleasure to work with Chief Doyle now. He's always been kind, the utmost professional. Whenever I needed something, I could call and know that I'd get a phone call back or a text or an email saying, "Thank you, we'll get on it, no problem, Paul, whatever you need." That's all I'm going into. I'm going to let these guys who've worked with the chief for over 30 years themselves give you all the dirt on the chief. So, Peter?
Well, when myself and Captain Doudash, Mike was asked to say a few words, we are honored to do that, in light of the fact that we've worked so many years with the chief. So, put together just a, we're going to approach this in a two-pronged approach. I'm going to talk about the chief's professional career, and Mike's going to take on, and Captain Doudash is going to address it in a more personal note, so. So, I guess we'll start, in 1985, then-college student and Bradley's security guard, Mark Doyle answered an ad in the Lowell Sun newspaper, in which the town of Merrimack, New Hampshire, was seeking police officers. He then took the department's written and physical exams and passed with high scores and was invited to the oral board interview. The board was very impressed with this young man and recommended that he be hired. Joe Devine did so in July of 1985. Then-recruit Doyle attended the 73rd New Hampshire Police Academy, in which he graduated, earning the Outstanding Officer Award, this award which is given to the officer who attempted to reach the highest levels of achievement during that academy, and obviously the chief did. He also received the Notebook Award. You might be asking yourself what exactly this award is about, but you have to remember, back in 1985, we didn't have computers, we didn't have word processors, and that when a recruit was in class, he had to do a lot of handwriting on his notes, and we were lucky if we got handouts. And then, afterwards, they had to go back to their dorm and then type out these notes and spend many hours doing so, while the cadre would occasionally come in and make us do push-ups, sit-ups, and run. And the chief did this, he did a great job, and this is actually, there's a lot of work involved in this, and that's what he got that award for. It was no easy task. Upon graduation from the academy, then-officer Doyle completed the field training program with then-FTO Mike Doudash, and worked as a patrolman from 1985 to 1988. During that time, he joined the department's motorcycle unit and earned the nickname "Ponch", based upon the character in the TV series Chips, which was played by then-actor Eric Estrada, who, at the time, he had dark hair and bore a resemblance too. The chief was also a member of the Accident Investigation Team and the Dive Team. And around this time, he married his lovely wife Mary, and eventually moved to Merrimack. And in 1988, he was promoted to Sergeant. He became an assistant squad leader. And also around this time period, Mark and Mary's first daughter Allison was born, and two years later, their second daughter Alan was born. In 1994, he was promoted to Lieutenant and became a squad commander. I was lucky enough to be his sergeant at the time, and our squad consisted of Lieutenant Edmonds, Ken Stimson, Brian Boulay, Chris Morenci, Tim Connell, and Ronnie Leverge. Many of those guys, myself included, due to Mark's mentoring and leadership, were able to attain higher ranks. In 1995, the chief obtained his Bachelor's Degree from Franklin Pierce College. No easy task when you think you're working a full-time job, raising a family, and trying to put the bread on the table. Shortly thereafter, his third child Alex was born. A couple of years later, he was transferred to Detective Lieutenant and then promoted to Captain in 2002. Captain Doyle completed tours in both the Administrative and Patrol Divisions, and he was promoted to Deputy Chief in 2007. Graduated from the 244th FBI National Academy in March of 2011, and he was promoted to Chief in April of 2011, and received the Businessman of the Year Award that same year from the Merrimack Chamber of Commerce. But probably one of the most significant moments in Chief Doyle's career came when he canceled Halloween. His popularity among the elementary schools took a significant dip. He has since, we're still not out of the woods, threatened to cancel Christmas, and on many occasions, threatened to cancel my birthday. On a serious note, though, the chief, and the chief has led by example. What he wouldn't, what he wouldn't ask us to do, what he wouldn't do. He's mentored us, he's mentored me. He's emphasized the focus on training. I watch him every day, make his decisions, he's deeply concerned about each and every member of this department. And at periods in my life, he's been there for me, he's been a friend. So, I'm going to let Captain Doudash take over from there.
Thank you, Pete. Before I start, you kind of refreshed my memory of being the chief's FTO, and I just remember in the first week or two, I think, one thing that the chief will always remember is how not to make an arrest, when we made arrests, when we shouldn't have, and...
There was no "we," that was you.
Yeah. Pretty close to a lawsuit, but I think we remember the name, but we won't mention it. I was asked to say a few words about the chief, and I just, you heard Captain Albert talk about the chief's excellent police career. I just feel it's really important to let you guys know a little more about the chief as Mark Doyle. First, the thing that everybody in this town should know is he's a great person, and when it comes down to things, he has unlimited amount of energy, and he's always willing to help others. And everybody in this room that works with Mark knows that. When it comes down to like Special Olympics, Mark is a leader in the state when it comes to Special Olympics. He has always supported it, he's always at the events, and he supports all the guys who donate their time, and he encourages it. For the 30 years I've known Mark, there's nobody more giving than Mark. And what I mean by that is, every Christmas, Mark has given out gifts to the employees. He goes around, and when it comes to birthdays, before you know it, there's a birthday cake for everybody, makes sure that there's something being said, and everybody's being sung, "Happy Birthday," and he's always giving. And I just want to talk about something that's happened the last two weeks. I worked with Mark at the mall, if you remember this, Mark, on Black Friday, and we're walking around, you know, doing the detail, we go through the main entrance, and we see the Christmas tree. On the Christmas tree is envelopes, and I've been seeing this for 20 to 30 years from Mark Doyle, at the Hot Rice Cafe, and now at the mall. Mark goes, "Hold on a minute," and he goes over and picks up an envelope, and makes sure that he can give to somebody, a family that's in need. And that's Mark Doyle, and everybody who works for him knows that's the way Mark is. He's always giving his time, he's always giving something to somebody because he cares about him. The other night, we mentioned, we're talking about what we're doing after, you know, off-duty, and Mark mentioned, he goes, "Hey, I'm going to Milford, and I'm going with Mary, and we're going to go visit one of our former Good Morning callers, who's now in a nursing home." And that's Mark Doyle. Mark Doyle's that type of person who will go beyond and above everything, and he goes to talk to everybody. And if you look at some of our programs, from the Good Morning Luncheon, which we had today, to all the other programs we have, including things with Special Olympics, Ed Payne, Wiffle Ball Tournament, Mark Doyle's the first one to sign up and be there, and he's there for usually the entire time that he gives his time and effort. So, that's Mark Doyle. He's always giving himself to others. Mark, thank you for the past 30 years. Hopefully, we have more years ahead of ourselves, but there's nobody more caring than you, and I mean that. You really amaze me every time I'm with you, when you want to care for somebody. And again, I've seen you grab those gifts, you're always giving to people that you don't even know. You're so caring, and that's really special, and that's something I look up to. So, with that, on behalf of the whole police department and all the members, congratulations on your 30 years so far at the police department, although we have many more to go. Thanks, Mark.
I mean, what you said is moving, and I do appreciate it. And I want to look forward to many more years of your mentorship. If it weren't for both of you who were hired before me, and the impact that you had and the examples that you set, I wouldn't be here as well. We wouldn't all collectively be able to serve the community and do what we need to do in the department to make sure it's moving in the right direction. And we heard about Chief Mulligan, former Chief Mulligan, who took that chance a few years ago to hire us, and my hat goes off to you, and I thank you for giving us the opportunity. As Danny will tell you, when, back then, when we were all looking for jobs in the profession of law enforcement, it's very difficult to break into that profession. Chief Mulligan took a chance on us, and forever, I'm indebted to you, and again, have no regrets at all. And to my lovely wife Mary, for the last 29 years that we've been married, I want to thank you so, so much for all that you've been able to do and all of your support. Without it, as you heard from Danny, it's the wives that really are the ones who stand behind us all, they're the ones who actually support us and listen to us complain and whine about why we're late from the council meetings, and why we have to spend more time where we have to, because of the nature of the job that we do. And for all of the folks in public safety, the firemen, the AMS folks, and my friends and colleagues in the police department, I thank you all, because again, without your support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, and I certainly wouldn't be able to do what I do. So, thank you very much.
Blaming us for getting out late, that never happens. Okay, two more people who have been unable to come tonight, but I just want to be able to make a note. Public Works Equipment and Maintenance Division, 30-year clock to Brian Frioli, date of hire 5/85. And Public Works Wastewater Division, also a 30-year clock to, I don't have the name, Vogel.
Lee Vogel.
Date of hire 9/30/85. And then, finishing this up, I've said this more than once, but I don't think there has to be anything more said. We are elected officials. We sort of run the town. And I say that, sort of. People who are here run the town. The Fire Department, the Police Department, DPW, you're the one who make us safe, who keep the roads plowed, all those things. Sometimes we get credit, and sometimes we get blamed, but most of the time, we get credit for something we don't do. You people do it. So, from the citizens of Merrimack, I want to thank you for all of those years of service, and not only the people who are being recognized now, but to everybody in all the departments. Thank you very much. No, I know you really all want to stay, but why don't we take a five-minute break so that you can decide? Oh, yes, absolutely, one more comment. He's retiring, he didn't get out at 3 o'clock, so he's going to make sure you guys can't leave. Dan Edmonds, 9 Clay Street. Always wanted to do that. A couple of things that I forgot as I'm looking around the room. I want to recognize Larry Westholm, former lieutenant, and your 20-year thing is around here somewhere, for coming tonight. Dean Kilkelly, Greg Walters.
Dean Kilkelly, Greg Walters, Ted Dillon, Chris Dowling. I want to thank the council. Mark, you've been a good friend for the last 30 years. You've done good things, and I value that friendship, and the memories that we've had the last 30 years, let's just leave it, 30 years are great, great memories, and you won't hear, "Hey, does Edmonds work for you?"[625.41][625.41](Laughter). Thank you.[627.41][627.41](Applause).
Okay, now we'll take a five-minute recess. Good evening. I'd like to continue with the meeting, please. Thank you. Before I go on to the further agenda, I'd like to make a sad announcement, most of Merrimack will know it. Stephen G. Marz was a frequent audience member at town council meetings when many of the Eagle Scout project presentations were made. He was the committee chairman of the Boy Scout Troop 424, and was also the past Grand Knight of Bishop Primo Council 10896, Knights of Columbus at St. John Newman Church in Merrimack. Upon his passing on November 27th, Merrimack lost a very important mentor for the many Boy Scouts in our community, and his leadership helped develop so many young men to be successful in pursuing their Eagle Scouts. We wish his family and the Boy Scouts our sincere condolences, and know that he will be remembered for years to come in the lives of those boys he influenced. May he rest in peace, and may we have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Okay, on to the agenda. Kinder Morgan. We are going to be speaking about the intervener status later on the agenda during the new business number two. Mr. Mahan attended a meeting with the Coalition with Governor Hassan, and Hassan, sorry. And would you like to say a few words? You were also in the Conservation Committee meeting, you want to be reported on as well.
Yeah. I met with the governor and a couple of her staff members that handled the environmental issues for the state and for her office, to talk about the information that we, that the Coalition presented to her about the discharge issues for the blowdowns for the compressor station and the meter station. The, we had talked to her from the Boston area, who has been doing private, his own work on gathering information. I gave that material to the council last week, as to the information that he presented and the issues that he raised. The governor was quite concerned about the potential health issues that were involved in all of that, and also reiterated what her position has been with regard to the pipeline in the state of New Hampshire. A lot has been made about, this is an aside on this one, a lot has been made about, you know, this opposition that they're talking about, and when you read the letters, please read them carefully, okay? Because they're opposed, because certain questions haven't been answered, certain issues haven't been dealt with by Kinder Morgan. And based on that, based on that, those actions by Kinder Morgan, they're opposed, they're opposed to the pipeline going forward at this time, unless and until there's more forthcoming with information and answers to those questions. So it's not an unqualified opposition, if you will, okay? The governor also made clear her role as the chief executive officer for the state, that she has other responsibilities and other issues in regard to other interests in the state, and has to take the whole totality of the issue in hand and take a look at it. And in the end, what is in the best interest of the state of New Hampshire. So that's where we, that's where we left that, that whole thing. It was about three or four days of a lot of activity on that particular issue between Senator Ayotte and her, and several other members of the congressional delegation. The other, the other issue is the Conservation Commission meeting was, two representatives from Kinder Morgan came in to talk about the conservation land and the trade-offs from the conservation land and...
Mitigation.
Mitigation, mitigation issues. Thank you. The mitigation issues, the, basically, when pressed, they said that they felt that the, what they felt was involved was barely an acre and a half. Keep in mind that this is a straight, narrow line, 50 feet wide, okay, that they're talking about impacting that piece of property at the intersection of Natticooke and Continental Boulevard, okay? So that was their assessment, all right? And they also wanted to have some kind of an answer or response from the Conservation Commission within 30 days. Chairman Tenhae very politely pointed out that that was probably not gonna happen, and it had to do more with the calendar than it had to do with anything else, and particularly since it was gonna be difficult to deal with two major holidays in between, and the desires of community members and himself included to take time off during that, to spend with their families. They were insistent on the 30 days, so he just let it go at that, and had nothing to offer in terms of what we might consider for the mitigation, the mitigation issues or the mitigation cost. So anyway, that was, that was the gist of the two, the two meetings that I, that I went to, to keep in touch with what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Jody Valencourt is going to provide a short report on the SEC meeting, the Site Evaluation Committee meeting in Milford.
Thank you, Nancy. I attended on December, I believe it was 3rd?
Thursday.
Thursday, December 3rd, with a couple of other council members were there also. I attended the Site Evaluation Committee Public Information Sessions. Basically, it's regarding the application for the certificate of site and facility to be filed with New Hampshire SEC by the pipeline, now that the application has gone in. They had a, excuse me, a meeting format where they had a project overview. They had an open house also, where people could, they had information on one floor of, of the building, and they had, that was from 5:00 on. Then they had a project overview where they had, I don't know how many, it was a large panel.
Nine.
Nine. All of the members of Kinder Morgan explained basically the project overview, which it's a report that we've all seen lots and lots of times, but I suppose some people, it's been the first time that they've seen it. Then they had a question and answer period, and it was moderated. I just wanted to let people know that the session was moderated by Kathleen McGuire, a retired New Hampshire Superior Court Judge. They had questions and answer period, and then they had a section for public comments. They took questions from the audience. The questions did go through some Kinder Morgan, Lucas Meyer was there, and another Kinder Morgan employee sat at the table, and the questions were handed to those two individuals before they were presented to the Kinder Morgan reps to answer. And then lots of people came forward from the public. It's a lot of, I don't know if you wanted me to reiterate the comments or anything, there was a lot of comments we've heard before, those of us who have been really entrenched in this and involved in this for over a year, but there were also some good points, new points too, that had been made. And there were some union people, because from what I understand, there have been some contracts signed with some New Hampshire unions, and there were some union people speaking in support of the temporary jobs that would be afforded them as a result of this project. So there was about four, and the majority of the comment was definitely in opposition. And it's just very articulate, very well researched, thoughtful comments and questions. I was, as always, impressed with the people in New Hampshire who came forward to speak. But I believe that that meeting was, there was court transcription being done, and that all of that information was gonna go to the SEC and move on for the next part of the process. Is there anything that I missed, Bill or Tom?
Nope, except the judge was having a hard time moderating.
Yes, she...
It wasn't her usual bailiwick.
No, and she was rather ineffective, I thought. So anyway. I just wanted to mention, too, I did not attend the Conservation Commission meeting because I was out of the state for business that day, but I did watch the three-hour meeting from the luxury of my computer at home. And the one and a half acre, I just wanted to clarify, that's permanent. They're talking about affecting the landscape around the pipeline. That's one and a half acres are permanent. That doesn't take into their calculations for the under-construction disturbance, which they had indicated that they were going to repair, bring back to its natural state on site. So just that one clarification. And then on Monday, December 21st, at 6:30 in the Memorial Conference Room, which is in the town hall, the room in between the town clerk's office and the town manager's office, under Old Business Item Number One, the NED Pipeline for the Conservation Commission meeting, there will be an agenda item, a meeting with representatives of Kinder Morgan related to the survey agreement for Commission Parcel 2B-358-1. Kinder Morgan has requested the Commission agree to sign a survey agreement. Kinder Morgan had originally contacted the town about that parcel, and that parcel is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And just so that, if people don't know which parcel that is, Tom, you can probably give a really accurate description, but it's a piece of land that was donated by the Patterson family in the, was it 1989, I believe it was, when Camp Sergeant?
No, they just bought that two years ago. There was another, there was an owner, the Commission had had their eye on the property.
Right, and it was...
And that the family at the time wasn't ready to do anything with it, and about two years ago, I'll say, they came forward and said that they would be willing to transfer it to the Conservation Commission.
Right, and it's off of Continental?
It's right, as you come out Natticooke Road, at the intersection of Natticooke and Continental, it's essentially to your left by a few hundred feet, and then to the right, it runs almost down to Penachuck Square.
And there is a conservation restriction on the deed?
Right, yeah.
So we'll, we'll be discussing that on Monday night.
Yeah, it's a pretty strong one, too.
Yes, it is.
Although at the time that the transfer wasn't made, we, there was no contemplation of a project to the scope.
No.
However, they wanted to put those things in place because of, they thought it was a good idea just for the location, but the other piece was the proximity to the Penachuck watershed.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, the last item is, let's make sure everyone knows, some know, some don't. This afternoon, we received an application from Kinder Morgan for a right-of-way permit. And what they're saying is, in fact, I made copies, my computer would not print out a copy of it, and we, I did have Paul make out extra copies, and I have them, so if anybody wants them. Seeing none. Legally, according to our ordinances, they have every right to be approved for this purpose. But because of the complex nuances of our Kinder Morgan relationship, Eileen would like to know if there are any questions, concerns of the town council prior to approval. One of the things I also want to be able to clarify, we got additional correspondence from Jeff Strong, who is the Public Works Department Highway Division Inspection Foreman, also insists that Kinder Morgan must meet all the requirements mandated by the ordinance, such as insurance, more specificity related to specific streets and location, and more specificity as to the scope of work. Because, and I want to be able to read it succinctly, find my own copy of it, it's the very last page of the application. Just give me a minute. And I was so organized, see what happens?
Could I kill the dead air, Madam Chair, with just a quick comment from the SEC meeting?
Oh, say that again?
From the Site Evaluation Committee in Milford, just to dovetail off.
You wanted to be able to make, I look for this?
Well, yeah, I was just going to comment...
That's fine.
That I thought that the...
You're buying your time.
You're buying me time?
That is correct.
That's terrific, thank you.
That is correct. I thought the testimony provided by the Merrimack Village Water District's consultant, Emery Garrett, was absolutely positively fantastic, and it was poignant, on point, and...
Poignant.
I'm trying to fill up the dead air.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate your...
I am opening for Jerry Vale next week at the Co., but just so you know.
You can give it up now, because I have the page.
Okay.
Are you all done?
I'm all done, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the cover. Okay, what I wanted to be able to just quote is, "The scope of work is written, we are going to be surveying the edge of roads. We will also be surveying existing features for aerial targets like the corner of stop sign lines, painted on roads, manhole, and storm drains. These may be a half mile away from our proposed centerline location. We will also be surveying control points along streets and right-of-ways." So, excuse me, clearly by the information and what we've already received, they need to be able, be more specific in terms of site, and if they are, in fact, only taking pictures, which is what has been described, then that should be in it as well. But I'll open it up to the council as to questions, comments.
Do you have a copy of what, of the right-of-way app? I looked at it very briefly online, I did not make a copy of it.
Well, I have here, give me a minute. It's pretty clear in terms of the requirements, and as we mentioned, you know, legally, they have the right, because it's a road, it's not on property, and I think that's what needs to be very specific. Yes, Jody?
I have a question about process.
Okay.
So Eileen posed the question to us about our position regarding this, and no surprise to anybody, I'm vehemently against it. But my question is, and if they're legally entitled, I don't know enough about the legalities regarding this to really have an educated opinion one way or the other. I don't, I'm not comfortable with, they send something, they don't send something, it's incomplete, they have the wrong owner. I just, I'm not comfortable with them moving forward with something like this. But when you mentioned Jeff Strong, he had indicated that the scope of work looks like a request for a blanket permit request for anywhere in the town right-of-way. So we clearly, on this permit request, don't have the information that we need in order for our public work... for our Public Works Department to approve it.
That's correct.
So, for that fact alone, I'm not in favor of this. But should that information come forward from Kinder Morgan, as it should, then what would happen if the council in a majority were against it? Would they still be able to, if the council in a majority was okay with it, as long as the information came forward from Kinder Morgan? Would we revisit it again as a council? That's what I'm not clear about, how we would handle this moving forward.
Tom, you can correct me, I'll just do an opinion, you can help me.
That's right.
Because you are more well-versed than I am. My understanding is that legally, they have every right to request a right-of-way, which is on a street, permit. I think it's, however, also reasonable to hold them to the letter of the law of the ordinance, including specificity of a what streets, because that's what clearly it says, and to be more specific in terms of the scope of work, and literally have them write down, taking pictures. That's very, and also to make it clear to them somehow that they, to reiterate, they are not allowed to go on property. So I think, you know, I understand your concern, I also have an understanding that there are boundaries, that it's a legal process, we can't stop it. But I think we can be, request specificity. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
I have one more question, Nancy, if you'd allow me. The taking pictures part, where did that come from? Was that a phone conversation that Eileen had with someone? And who was it?
Well, she actually talked to John Prue, too.
It was John Prue that she spoke with, and he was the one that told her it was going to be, and again, that's just verbal over the phone-
That's right.
-which means nothing to me.
It's not written, that's right.
I don't, I don't trust them. Because this general conditions under this right-of-way permit talks about pavement to be excavated, cut and removed, contractor shall put, I mean, it talks about physical things that would be done. So, him telling Eileen over the phone that all he's going to do is take pictures is not good enough for me.
I agree, I agree, that it has to be written, very specifically. And also documentation, not allowed on any land. I agree with that. Other, yes, Dan?
But at this point, we haven't seen a completed application form. They got the application, but it hasn't been-
Yes, it was emailed out, in fact. It's not complete at all.
Right.
What was received, here you go, Dan, what was received is here.
Right.
And there's a lot missing.
Right.
And on top of that, there's the additional criteria that they're not meeting either.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else have comments or questions? Tom?
So I think the point, thank you, is that if they, in fact, present us with a valid bona fide permit request, we should follow our laws and rules and regulations and grant them that. But as you pointed out, and as Jody has pointed, they do have to tell us what they plan to do.
Right.
And that's part of the request, is part of the, it's clearly outlined in the ordinance.
Okay.
There's no reason we should treat them differently than we do Comcast, or EverSource, or any other person that wants that kind of an effort.
Okay. So, am I accurate in giving guidance to Eileen, to give guidance to the Building Department? There's building, no?
Right-of-way permit.
Thank you.
We will be giving it to her, who then convey it to them.
Right. Related to, which they already know, we've already been told, need more specificity in terms of the site, more specificity as to the scope of the work, is it just picture-taking? And they are to reiterate in writing that they are not allowed on any land. Is that an accurate summary?
Off of the right-of-ways, or in-
Right, off of right-of-way, right. Okay, thank you. I think that would be sufficient, right, Paul?
Thanks, Joe.
You got that down?
Oh, okay, cool.
I believe so.
Thank you. Okay, and that's all. Now, comments from the press and public? Anyone?
I just want to clarify that the job of the Merrimack Town Council would be to represent the town of Merrimack and the people of Merrimack. So, in light of that, so far, we have the Merrimack Village District, the Merrimack Conservation Commission, we have the Merrimack School Board, and we have pretty much the Merrimack Town Council have all come out and opposed the NED Pipeline. However, I, I mean, at the last meeting, there was one person that spoke, very argued for Kinder Morgan as opposed to for Merrimack, and that concerned me greatly. And I actually went through the minutes, and I kind of highlighted things, and it made me a little uncomfortable. And then I got it, and emailed that of something that I will give you after, that made me a little bit more uncomfortable. And I just wonder where loyalties lie, who is, if we're being represented the way that I want to be represented. So, in light of that, I am asking Counselor Dwyer to be recused from further Kinder Morgan discussions. I am not comfortable that you are working in Merrimack's best interest. And you can laugh if you want, sir, but-
Of course I can.
Yep, will you be my guest, may I approach?
An American with free speech?
This is, with due respect, with due respect, this is a comment section.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm not going to answer anything, I'll make a comment personally right now without being able to really review any information. I can't speak for any of the other council members. But this, and you have every right to say anything you want, but no one on the council needs to respond.
That's fine.
Okay. So you want to give this to me for, go ahead.
I am just submitting that as reasons why I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, you might push this up because-
Well, why don't you go back and repeat what you just said? Because they can't hear on the, okay.
And this, this came out five days before.
Okay, say it, say what you're talking about on mic, if that's okay.
These are reasons why I feel that Counselor Dwyer is, he, his loyalties, I feel, are not as much with the people of Merrimack as they are with Kinder Morgan. He, we, you just talked about John Prue. I mean, clearly, he has, he has made no secret that he is a friend of John Prue. You know, he, the last meeting, he, everything that we said, he argued that, no Kinder Morgan, no Kinder Morgan, no Kinder Morgan. I just gave you the minutes, so you can go back and look.
Okay.
So I think that in further discussions, you know, if we have the motion to intervene, you know, I am concerned, you know, the last, he voted against the last letter, he votes against this one, I'm very concerned. I would like to know that the Town Council, everyone else has unanimously said, you know, we are opposing this, but yet, he fights for Kinder Morgan. So I would like to know, since we voted him for representing the people of Merrimack, is he representing the people of Merrimack, or is he representing Kinder Morgan?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to identify what you submitted.
She submitted minutes of the Town Council meeting of Thursday, November 19th, and also a picture from a Facebook page.
Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Have we approved those November 19th minutes?
Are they on the agenda?
Yeah.
They're on the agenda tonight. So these are the draft.
So it'd be draft minutes, then?
Draft minutes.
Pending approval of the council.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Wendy Thomas, Wildcat Falls. First of all, I think it is reprehensible that any council member would laugh at a resident's comments. I think it's beyond reprehensible, I think it's disgusting. The reason I'm up here is that I attended the rally in Concord on Friday, the 11th, to present the over 10,000 signatures on a petition opposing the pipeline to Maggie, Governor Hassan. A couple hundred people were there, I believe Maggie, as well as other elected officials, got the idea. There were lots of signs. One was very clever, said, "Wake up Maggie." Lots of concerns about the land, lots of concerns about eminent domain, health impacts, and the environment. There were quite a few elected representatives there that were speaking, I don't know the names offhand, because I didn't bring that with me, but their concerns were, again, eminent domain, health, and environment. There are currently a few bills in process, most of them have to do with eminent domain. That's a huge thing in New Hampshire. And so there's some bills that are currently in process. Although one bill, it's not a bill, it's a law, one of the elected officials reminded everyone that surveyors need to have a license to survey in New Hampshire. Even if they're licensed in other states, they must have a license in New Hampshire to survey. Apparently, a lot of these survey teams are not following that law. So residents of Merrimack have the right to go up to any survey team and request to see the New Hampshire license. If they do not have one, or if they cannot provide one, then you can kick them off your land. You can, you can call the police, because they're breaking the law. So, that was, I thought that was very interesting, and I thought it was good for people to know. Governor Hassan was not there, her representative took the petition, and I don't know that she's issued a statement since then, but it was, it was a good show of support.
Thank you. Bill, you want to say something?
Can I respond to that? Just, my dad's a Lance Aveo Wendy, I think I've shared that with you. And I can remember, I just, I'm just trying to ask you to be a little cautious about your comment, only because, growing up as a kid, my dad used to take my brother out in the field with him at the age of 10, 11, and 12, and my, he used to send my brother 400 yards down the line, holding a rod, and say, "Find the bound and put it there." And my brother certainly was not licensed in any capacity, but he was helping my father, who was licensed, go about the task of accomplishing the job that was assigned to him.
I think it's the team that needs to be licensed, not necessarily every single person, but I may be wrong.
I'm just saying, you could have a team of Rodmen that don't necessarily need to be licensed, they're just there to do labor work, that, to assist whoever the license-
I'd have to read the law, I don't know what the law states. If the law states that everyone needs to be licensed, then everyone needs to be licensed.
And that's, and I accept the point.
But you brought up a good point, and somebody mentioned this on the forum. If you are going to confront someone on a survey team, please do it with somebody else as a witness, or, you know, don't individually go up, this is obviously a very heated topic. And people sometimes don't behave the best that they can possibly behave.
Thank you. Okay, appointments, there are none. Oh, I'm sorry. You just took your time. Sorry about that.
I was trying to give Bill his time to talk. Jim Ferrer, Seven Marion Lane. So to your last point, Nancy, in regards to duly legally able to withstand survey rights, and you are correct, we're not. But what North Reading specifically, which is a large town in mass, as everybody knows, along with other sub, smaller towns in mass, have denied public survey rights regardless of the land to Kinder Morgan. So Kinder Morgan is now spending money to go to the courts to get them overturned. They will be overturned, but it's another step, it's another roadblock. They put all of you, and all of us, through HE double L, if you will, for the better part of a year, so why not throw another curveball at them and make them do that?
Spend more legal money.
Yeah, exactly, spend more money. Not our money, we don't need, make them go to court. And with that said, our little grassroots campaign, if you guys are following, you know, their stock ticker, they're actually withholding dividends in Q4 to help raise money and solidify the company, and it's the first time they've done so in years. And it's either like 11 or 13 cents a share, which really equated to almost $300 million. And then, to date, 70% of landowners in New Hampshire, and about 62% in mass, have denied survey rights. And that's it.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes.
I would suggest to you that the bond rating is much more worthy of attention than a cut in the dividend, because a cut in the dividend would indicate that they're looking to retain capital to be able to do what they need to do, so.
Well, part of that, to retain some of that dividend profit, was to stabilize another company that they actually purchased about 50% of. So they're not using it to fight necessarily the NED project, but they had to do that to balance out their portfolio, to stabilize another company, because it was kind of heading south. But yeah, if it was for something else, that would be a huge issue for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
Yeah, well, the stock price, the stock price is down 65% since April, too, so.
Yeah, I've been, I follow it, yes.
And Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbarnton, just for the folks playing along at home, you will notice that the price of the pipeline, all of a sudden, has dropped from $5 billion down to $3.3 billion, and that is because only the market path has actually been approved for investors, and that is the part that goes from Wright, New York, to Drake at Mass. So the part that goes from Pennsylvania to Wright, New York, their investors have not approved that yet.
Interesting. Very interesting. And the saga continues. Okay, now are we ready? Okay. Appointments, there are none. We have a public hearing related to the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency grant for Merrimack Police Department, and it's going to be presented by Captain Michael Dudas. Town council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant, the amount of $7,547.28 from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for the Merrimack Police Department, so.
Thank you. Captain Dudas? For the past, probably about 15, 20 years, we've applied to New Hampshire Highway Safety for a grant, and this year, we did the same thing, for an amount of $7,547.28 to be appropriated for money for what they call DWI patrols, which are, basically, it would be six, 20, or 26-hour patrols that are paid by overtime, so they're separate from the regular shifts that are out there. So it supplements the patrol force to specifically look for the impaired driver. And New Hampshire Highway Safety has approved that if it's accepted by the council.
Excellent. Paul?
And we do not plan on doing any roadblocks. This is just driving around town.
It's my perennial question, you took it off the table.
He was already-
I know.
Just had to be sure.
That's correct, it's a mobile patrol.
He knows his audience, doesn't he?
That means I've been around too long. Or he's been around too long.
Both of you, yeah. Okay, are there any questions from, yes, Jody?
Thank you. Good question, how you doing?
Good.
I appreciate getting all the information, too, there's an awful lot that goes into it, and I read everything. The match tracking for personnel and other costs, that, the spreadsheet, is that something that you're just, you're required to fill out?
We're required to fill in, actually, I think Paul fills that out for us.
Okay.
We do a, we do, we track it through our payroll system.
And what is it that we're, that we need to track, or do we have to do in kind, or what kind of things do we have to do?
We track the number of hours, the person, the officer who's doing it, and the benefits associated with that officer, for that to get reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one other question on Exhibit C1, the very last page. I don't know, maybe about two-thirds of the way from the bottom. It talks about scope of services for traffic enforcement grants.
What does it start with, what's the beginning?
It's Exhibit C1, it's the last page of the, yeah.
They're bullet points.
It says, "Departments are recommended."
Yep.
Well, I mean, there's an awful lot of information in there about what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do, and it's very specific, and I appreciate that. But it says, "Departments are recommended to conduct a minimum of three documented stops per hour." I'm just wondering how they came up with that number, and what if you didn't have three people that warranted a stop, then what would you do? So if you could just speak to that a little bit for me, that would be great.
That is something that New Hampshire Highway Safety, they're asking for, it's not always possible to make three documented stops, but from the stats that we've provided for the past 15, 20 years, usually three outs, three stops per hour is about right. And a stop can be anything from, you know, somebody with a traffic, with a headlight out, to speeding, to a red light violation, going over the W O line. So that is, that's just an approximate figure that New Hampshire Highway Safety would like us to stop, three vehicles per hour.
And if you don't, if you only stop two, then we're still not in jeopardy of losing the grant money or anything like that?
Well, they are getting tighter, I will say that, you know, Lieutenant Paul Trepani did this grant, but the communication he's given for the past year, they've really tightened up the reins up in Concord, and it's coming down from the federal government. So there is a possibility it could be lost if we don't do exactly what they're looking for, so or at least be close to it. We've gone to some meetings- We've gone to some meetings, and they've said that everything is really pretty much data controlled now, so they are looking for numbers.
Any other, Tom?
Thank you. I mean, every other time you've come here, you've told me that we don't have a quota, we don't have a restriction, not you, but whoever has come to talk about these grants. We don't have quotas or restrictions or anything that we're driving for, that the idea is to try and improve the safety on the roads. Now, it sounds like they're tightening up, and we're going to try and meet quotas? I'm not sure I'm interested in this grant.
I can't say it's a quota, but it's, what's happened is, from what we've been told when we went to the meeting, it was Lieutenant Paul Truppa, that there have been some towns or departments in the state that have basically have gone out and done zero. They've received money, and they receive nothing. So they came up with a number of three, you know, documented stops per hour. Not saying it has to be exactly three, but they're looking for the police departments to do something, not just receive some money and do zero. And it's happened in New Hampshire, not Merrimack, but it's happened somewhere.
And that's what I read when I read through all the paperwork, is that they want you to do something, they want you to document what you're doing, and if you don't have any arrests or stops, then you can document that as well and explain what was going on, whether it was rainy, or whether it was, you know, for some reason, traffic was down that night, or something like that. It's not like they're going to penalize you if you don't make your three-per-hour type numbers. What it sounded like when I read the rest of the documentation in this last page, Exhibit C, I think sort of alludes to that, too, but the words in that particular section were a little tough to swallow.
Right.
So I'm concerned about that. But the other thing that I wanted to ask about, if I may, the grant is for, I don't remember the name, 7,500 and change, or something like that. And then it talks about in-kind services that we're providing in the order of $1,455. Is there a percentage or something that we're supposed to be matching, or does that number meet the match?
We aren't, there's no matching funds at all that we have to meet at all. And maybe Paul can speak on that, but I think it's.
Okay, on Part 7 budget, at the bottom, it says, "Please also provide the amount of matching funds you intend to contribute to this project." Matching funds are your department's contribution to this project. For example, additional enforcement patrol fuel costs, administrative time, and supervisors' time that are not funded by this grant. And it says administrative costs, $1,155.24, vehicle fuel and maintenance, $300. So that's matching funds to go to this grant.
I think, I see what you're saying there about the matching funds. I think what they're saying, like, for example, if an arrest was made, you know, there'd be supervisor oversight, you know, that we wouldn't charge for that. Obviously, we would use our fuel, so that would be part of, part of, you know, our match. I guess if you call it matching, we'd be paying for the fuel, and pretty much anybody else for backup officers who were part of an arrest. In other words, we would not bill for that.
Okay. It seemed like every other time I've listened to people talk about these grants, the grants cover the entire funding of these people that are coming in on overtime, not during their regular shifts, so it's additional officers on the road.
It is additional officers.
And that part, in the upper part of the budget, is covered at their estimated overtime hourly rate, and payroll deductions and all is covered. But then suddenly, I'm noticing there's these other factors that we have to put down that we're matching with, and I wondered if it was a 10 or 20% that we're trying to reach, or if there was some kind of a magical number.
I don't think there's a magical number at all.
It just is funds that we're going to be expending that are not covered by the grant as a function of this effort.
Correct.
I wonder if in the past, they've tried to charge for those things, and whether or not they wanted to specify. By the way, don't even bother trying to get money, because those aren't included.
Right, and we never have.
If it's excluded, there's a reason for it to be excluded.
At some point, they tried to.
Yeah, because somebody tried to get cute with it.
We don't do cute things.
No.
It's really just personnel service time on it. That extra is the court time, our prosecutors, things of that sort that go along with a DWI arrest.
Right. I mean, sometimes there's a chance that, you know, you could get arrested, and you might go over the six hours, and I think what they're looking for is, you know, for the department to pick up maybe that extra hour if it goes another hour. So that might be part of that magic.
You won't just drop it because you ran out of time.
Right.
Sorry. You can go free.
Yeah, like it is for the former Newmarket Town Manager.
Yeah, thanks.
Can I just make one more comment?
Yes, Tom, absolutely.
The public hearing says that this is a public hearing for overtime patrols for DWI enforcement by officers of our agency pursuant to RSA 3195B. But in the proposed solutions, Part 5 on Page 4, it says that although the focus will be on improved impaired drivers, removing impaired drivers from the roadways, all motor vehicle laws will be enforced by these patrols to include the recently enacted hands-free law and the New Hampshire child safety restraint laws. So you're not only focusing on DWI and removal of potential crash situations and things like that, you're actually doing a full patrol search while you're out on the roads.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, because it comes across in the public notices as this is strictly people out there for DWI patrols.
Right.
And in the past, that's what I've heard them say.
Right.
These are guys that are going to go out there, they're going to spend their time focusing on DWI.
Right.
And this proposed solution says they're going to spend their time focusing on all police work with a.
I think it's all motor vehicle related, because, you know, most DWI arrests come from minor things. It could be somebody that's on a cellphone, or somebody that, you know, went on the W O line, or somebody went through a stop sign, or somebody has a headlight. So I think it was just mentioned in the grant by, or application by Lieutenant Truppa, that would be covering everything.
Okay, thanks.
Bill? I was just going to point out that in the bullet point that Council Valencourt referred to, and the second point, bullet point below that, where it says that patrols result in few traffic stops, please provide an explanation on the activity report as to why an officer was unable to make the recommended number. So it's not a requirement. It's recommended. So if Patrolman Doudash is at 139 Joppa Road, you know, clocking people driving down Joppa Road, and he's there for an hour, you know, and he's not picking up anybody, then the report was going to be, he was at Joppa Road between X hour and X hour, heavily traveled road, you know, bus stops, typical route to the transfer station, and people were driving, you know, people were driving the limit. Now, that's going to be the type of feedback, because I imagine that the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency is going to look at that information in terms of what I would say motorist behavior, driver behavior at a given time on a given day with specific conditions. So it's just, even though there may not be any complicity to, meaning whatever the recommended number is of the grant, at least they're providing data back to the people in question so that that information can be filtered down, not just to Merrimack, but all the other law enforcement agencies in the state. So, I mean, it's not a requirement, it's recommended.
Recommended. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do I go for a motion on this?
We have to open up the hearing.
Oh, duh. Thank you very much. You really helped me a lot tonight, Bill. Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing at 8:24. Is there any public input? They're rushing. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:25. Let's make it. Okay, now.
Madam Chair, I would move that the Merrimack Town Council accept an expend of a grant in the amount of $7,547.28 from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for the Merrimack Police Department to pay overtime, DW patrols pursuant to charter Article 8 hyphen 15 and RSA 31 colon 95 hyphen B, and furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to accept and expend said grant funding.
A second?
Second.
Second by Dan Dwyer. Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Dan Dwyer. Any further discussion?
I just want to comment, we just found out tonight that Lieutenant Truppa is retiring from the Merrimack Police Department. And obviously, he was been a key component in a lot of the grants that he brought before the council to make us, you know, one of the safest communities in the United States, but also to, you know, edify the commitment that Chief Doyle, and like all of us, have made to community policing. So I want to thank Lieutenant Truppa publicly for the work that he's done with the grants, and I look forward to finding out who's going to take over for Lieutenant Trup, because I have big shoes, big shoes in my eyes.
That would be Sergeant LeVake, soon to be Lieutenant LeVake.
Wonderful, wonderful. Congratulations to Sergeant, soon to be LT LeVake. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, all ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed. And any abstaining? No. So it's 6, 1, 0. Tom Koenig opposing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben Lee.
I just, I.
Just curious.
Well, no, Tom's commentary this evening has me questioned as well to a degree. Of course, I'm very frustrated over the hands-free law. I think it's, you know, it's unnecessary. One of my questions would have been, but I didn't think it could appropriate tonight because it didn't fit into the discussion, is how many people have been ticketed for use of their cellphone? And so I'm a little uneasy. I'm supportive, because I want to believe that it is for the primary purpose of DWI patrol, and that's the reason I did support it tonight. But you've given me pause, and I appreciate that.
Very good. Okay, next on the agenda, legislative updates from state reps, and I don't see any here, so I guess we can move on from that. Town manager report, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Parks and Rec Committee, sorry, the Parks and Rec Department's new winter activities brochure is now available. Printed copies can be picked up at Town Hall, Merrimack Public Library, and the John O'Leary Adult Community Center. They are also available online through Parks and Rec Department's website, www.merrimackparks with an S, nrec.org, all one word. The annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony was held on Sunday, December 6th, and we had an estimate of 600 people in attendance at the tree lighting ceremony. I guess when you have a 50-degree day, people will come home.
Yeah, usually it's 300.
Bean Road and McGaw Bridge replacements. Bean Road tree clearing is complete, and the contractor is preparing for installation of the water line. The existing water line runs through the existing bridge and needs to be relocated. The water line work should last through next couple of weeks. The contractor is installing erosion control measures to protect the Boozer Brook as they disturb each area. McGaw Bridge, the work is scheduled to begin following the closure of the bridge on December 28th. Please help spread the word of the road closure. The detour route will be signed to utilize Wire Road and DW Highway for the duration of project. Tree clearing is scheduled for the 29th and 30th. And driving that road, I, tonight, I saw the detour signs, they're up, they're covered. And the sign is up at McGaw Bridge and Wire Road, saying that the road will be closed on the 28th. So we are trying to get the word out. The planning board has granted approval for the Flatley multifamily site plan at their meeting on December 15th. The project calls for a phase construction of 240 multifamily resident units, and is the first phase of the mixed-use development of the property. The planning board also, on December 15th, heard from the town and school of the proposed capital improvement plans. Memos with the board's recommendations have been sent to the council chair and school board chair. The board will be reviewing the MVD, CIP, in January. I have asked for their recommendations on the Excel spreadsheet. Once I get them, we will put that all up on the town's website underneath the finance section, for finance department's section on the website underneath CIP, so everybody can see both major and minor.
No, excuse me, the, there was no commercial attached to this. This is only the four apartment units. They can't get the fifth until they have a commercial connection.
It was the fifth. There was something being held up.
Right.
Okay. This is the planning board approval.
Yes. Merrimack Fire Rescue would like to remind everyone to use care during this holiday season. Fresh-cut trees need water daily. Keep trees at least three free from all water, all heat sources. Replace any lights or worn or broken cords with, and loose bulbs. Unplug the tree lights before leaving your home or going to bed. Blow out all candles when leaving the house or when you go to bed. Do not leave cooking unattended, especially oil. Ask smokers to smoke outside and provide a large, deep ashtray away from combustibles. Treat ashes from wood stoves or fireplaces like they are not completely extinguished. Place these ashes in a covered metal bucket and store this bucket outside your home, outside your garage, on a non-combustible surface. If you follow these tips, you can ensure that you and your family will have a safe and enjoyable holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Don't deep fry your turkey in the garage.
If it's frozen, too, don't do it.
Make sure it's totally thawed and dried.
It just, he brought me back almost 40 years ago, 35 years ago anyhow, to when I was a kid in the Army. Every Friday afternoon, we'd rally around the flagpole so the commander could tell us, "If you're going to drink, don't drive. If you're going to drive, don't drink." And so you say, "Sorry." I'm just getting a kick out of him.
That was good.
I apologize. I'm sorry. He just took me back 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I'm glad you can.
Thank you back to your youth.
Sounds like the commanding officer was close to retirement.
Bill? I was going to ask, when did Smokey the Bear take over as finance director? But seriously, a follow-up question to Paul, if I could. I was driving Wire Road, and I did see the sign at McGaw and Wire. Do we have a comparable sign at the other end? At DW and McGaw?
To be honest with you, I do not know. Kyle, can, do we?
There will be.
There will be one there.
Perfect.
There was a sign going up in front of the storage unit that was covered, probably similar to what you saw.
Right. Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Okay, all set? Okay, moving on to the next item. There's no consent agenda or business. Number one, MYA financial audit review. To review the financial audit statements of the Merrimack Youth Association for the year ending June 30th, 2015. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have Brian and Holly from the MYA Board here tonight to answer all those tough questions you might have for, the biggest, there's a couple of issues with the report that Mel Anson Heath issued on the MYA financial audit for 2000, June 30th, 2014. They are based, they are giving us a disclaimer of opinion. A disclaimer of opinion usually is not a huge deal, however, in this case, it's very important to understand why we got the disclaimer of opinion. This is the second year in a row that the MYA's audit had a disclaimer of opinion. If they were an organization trying to go get loans or financing from a bank, the bank could pull their financing, could close out their line of credits, can call their line of credits, things of that sort with this disclaimer. The important process of why this disclaimer is important this year is it's because they couldn't get enough information to do their audit. So basically, what we have in front of us is not an audit, it's a compilation. They're just, they don't have enough facts to come back to us and say that these numbers are solid.
So they couldn't analyze it?
They couldn't analyze it because there were some issues. They are pretty flush. They're a $500,000 organization. They had about $436,000 worth of expenses during this year, about $65,000 worth of profit. The other major issue, like I said, is what worries me about the disclaimer that they're doing is it's improve internal controls over their financial reporting, and that's a material weakness.
Explain internal controls.
Internal controls are procedures that you put in place so that you have assurances that the financial well-being of your company is being followed. There's cash management, there's expenditure management, things of that sort. Cash management might be when you get a, money into the organization, it's receipted, it's documented, it's put into the proper places so that you can follow a trail, a paper trail, basically saying, "Paul, you sent me $500. Yes, it was for this. Yes, it was for this program. Yep, check."
So it's procedural?
It's procedural.
Okay.
And about three years ago, when we were doing the last contract with the MYA, that was one of the major things that the council was, was-
Concerned.
Concerned about. In my opinion, reading this documentation about the internal control and, you know, centralized set of books, supporting documents, checks, copies of checks, invoices, bills, et cetera, those are all things we talked about three years ago with the MYA. Limiting the people involved in the counting process, things of that sort. I understand it's a volunteer organization. I know Holly is basically new as the treasurer. I know she has volunteer treasurers in each program. It might be time that a $500,000 organization hired a treasurer on a part-time basis to come in once a week to do deposits, to write checks.
Didn't that conversation occur prior?
It did, it did.
And I thought that there was some assurance. In fact, I vaguely remember, "We have enough money to be able to hire a part-time." So that was discussed way back then, but it never happened.
I don't know, you have to ask.
Or it never happened?
No, it hasn't happened.
Okay, okay.
So there are some things that need to be replaced. Hit the, no. There are some things that need to be replaced. They have the tools, they have the documentations, they have the internal controls that we wrote up three years ago that have been vetted actually through Mulan and Heath because they were the town's auditors at the time. So they have all these tools and information to do this. The other thing is, is that the contract is expiring on June 30th, 2016. We need to set up and start thinking about the contract for the following next period of time. The other thing is, is that right now, they're, they've been, half their years, or $36,000 has been given to the MYA. They do another payment on January 8th of 2016 for another $18,000. And then the following one would be in April for the final $18,000 for a total of 72, which was budgeted for in 1516. So, um, in my, in my opinion, looking at their contract, and I reviewed it real quick, but looking at their contract, item 17 on their contract, which is page three of eight, basically it says, no, this one, oh, this one here. I wrote, it basically says that the MYA should adopt and apply internal control procedures attached immediately, no, this, oh, I'll give this one, sorry. No problem. Immediately and provide, provide this by each October 31st. They're not in compliance with that aspect of number 17.
So they did receive a letter of non-compliance in November.
Correct.
But that has to do with the timing that they had not submitted on time, is that right?
Correct.
It had nothing to do with internal controls?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, why don't we offer you an opportunity to speak to us, and then we can ask questions from your council, if you want to?
Okay, so my understanding, and I don't know, I don't, I haven't been talking into the auditor, I haven't been going back and forth, that would be Holly and Tom. My understanding of the audit and the findings of the audit is because we were, we did everything we could to get that audit in on time to you, to the council, to make you guys and see that we're trying to get controls in place, and that we're trying to make things, these things happen, to appease everyone, I guess, best word I can think of. But we were waiting for one program to get that information to us. That didn't happen. We were just, we had one program that we're battling with, trying to get their reports back and get that off to the auditor. We waited, we were already, at this point now, we emailed them, we called them, we're late, okay? So at that point, I believe Tom made the decision, Tom Thornton, which he's unable to attend tonight, he wanted to come, but he couldn't come. He said, "You know what, let's, let's get some sort of report. We gotta get this in. We're already a week late. We need to get this in." And after that happened, we were able to get those reports, and everything did make it to the auditor, but it wasn't in on time, and it wasn't part of the audit. When I say in on time, I guess it wasn't on time, it was late. We did get him those reports that he was requesting, but he didn't have everything he needed by the time that report was written. That's my understanding.
So, Holly, so, Paul, any response to that?
If that is the case, I have no knowledge of it, but if that is the case, I would ask him to revise his management letter to the MYA and actually issue you financial statements and remove their disclaimer. And reissue you the financials, the proper financial statements, if that is the case, and he has everything in his power to issue you a clean report or a qualified report.
Now, as far as the financial disclaimer that he is, if you could help me out, what is, I mean, is that a way for them to protect themselves, saying that, you know, "There's nothing we found"?
No. The financial disclaimer is a way of them protecting themselves, but it's a way to make anybody who reads their financial statements that you can, do not rely on the numbers that are being presented for investment, or homes, or things of that sort, bonding. It's a way for the auditor to tell the public, Joe Public, so to speak, that there is, you can, you, "I am a professional, I'm doing the audit, but you really can't rely on these numbers because I could not verify these numbers. So, but I'm giving you the numbers that were given to me."
Well, with that said, I guess I don't understand why he couldn't verify them because he has everything we have.
Well, now he does, and that's why I'm saying, he needs to reissue your financial statements with everything that you have right now.
Okay, so go back to him and try to get a different report?
Yeah, and especially because the management letter is damning. An internal control, material weakness on any financial statement is, is one of the worst things you possibly can get.
Bill, you were first, then Dan, and then you guys. Go ahead.
Let me, I wanna wait.
Please.
I'm trying to find something good to say. So I go back to page four where they give the numbers of what was presented to them. And so the big one, the two big numbers that come together are the total, the total revenue number, which was $501,000, 543, and then expenses, $436,000 and change, and then a net, change in net assets is $64,000. So I'm trying to focus on at least the audit recognized and didn't challenge revenues and, and the kind of heart of the matter of what is coming in, what's coming out. So I'm looking at that profit figure that Paul had said at $64,000. At least these numbers are the, are the heart of the matter of what they're running. They took in 500 grand, they spent 436, they showed where the money was spent, and the profit number's there. So I'm just trying to find a silver lining somewhere where we can build on. Obviously, I think we all want a professional auditor and to be just, if it's, if it takes monthly or every two months, to help you guys become more professional because you are dealing with a half million dollars, and somebody of a professional nature needs to be helping your, your group out, so.
I guess my question is, and Paul, you perhaps can answer this, related to what your point is, Dan, I guess I'm wondering, are the numbers accurate or not? Because does he have the documentation to validate that those numbers are accurate? Paul, is that?
The disclaimer, this is what they received from the MYA, and this is what they've-
And that's how they generated the report.
Generated the report out of this. They, they, I don't know which program it was, if it was one of the larger ones or one of the smaller programs. If it was one of the smaller programs, this $501,000, most of it probably they could verify. If it was one of their larger programs, then they couldn't verify, but they verified some, some amount of this money, they couldn't verify all of it. So that's why I'm saying that they need to get these reissued.
So we don't know what the accuracy of these numbers is.
Correct. That's why they need to get their financial statements reissued.
Dan?
I guess my point is, thanks for that. I guess my point is, had there been something, a red flag, I think they would, they would have pointed to that red flag. Instead of just this general disclaimer, I think they would have been more forceful in their language, saying, "You know, this $501,000 didn't make sense to us, and here's why." But they didn't, they didn't, they didn't make statements like that in the overall report.
Gotcha.
Again, I'm trying to find some good, there's a lot of bad going on in this whole conversation, so I'm trying to find something that we can build on from here on this report.
I do want to say one thing. Everybody out watching and here, there are, there is some good that came out of this too. Identified or suspected fraud. We have not identified or obtained information that indicates that fraud may have occurred. So that is a financial assurance here, that they are, they believe there's no fraud, that they're doing things, they just gotta follow their internal controls, follow their procedures, get them up and running.
Accuracy.
Centralization, which is a big thing. Get, get the information to the auditor in a timely manner, and get their report reissued.
Sorry, go ahead.
If I may, as far as the internal controls, we do have, we have started internal controls. If you remember, we, we got rid of Vashon and Kluckey, and we went with a different firm, okay? So with all that information getting transferred over to them, that took time. Holly has just stepped up into the treasurer position. She was doing a great job with soccer, she's now on the executive board. She just came on, I believe, September, October. So, you know, this has all been thrown on at her, and she had to get all this done in three, four weeks, you know? So it's, it's gonna, it takes, it takes time. I mean, we, everyone's learning new positions, and there's a lot of turnover at the MYA, unfortunately.
Which is, which only reinforces the idea of having a part-time treasurer, because there is coming and going. I totally agree. I don't know if you're working on it, well, even if you're home, you're working, so let's, you know, I think the responsibility, the consistency that can occur for the investment of a part-time person to ensure, when people come and go, that person can stay and add some consistency and stability. I really, you know, I think you really seriously need to-
So one of the reasons that I stepped up to be on the exec board is I am an accountant by trade, not auditing, but financial accounting for corporations. So I do understand how it all works, but like Brian said, it's, it's hard to keep the positions are rotating. So I'm hoping that after the audit and having the findings, that we can make good with going forward, so.
Tom?
Yeah, we've been hearing this for six years.
I know.
It's the same thing every year. You come in, "Oh yeah, we're trying, we're trying, we're trying, we're trying to do this, we're trying to do that. We're trying to put these things in place." We put a contract in place with you three years ago, you're still out of compliance with the contract in terms of internal financial controls. And then I take a look at the, at the audit statement here, you don't need our money. Anybody that looks at the numbers shows, indicates that you don't need our $72,000 because you generated a net difference between your receipts and your expendables of $64,000. So you don't need our money at this point. And so why should we, you know, and if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna be willing to be in compliance with, with these internal financial controls, which are for your protection, it's not an appeasement issue here, okay? This is for your protection, the protection of the, of the kids that you're trying to provide programming for, to make sure that the money is being used effectively and accounted for effectively, okay? You're supposed to be examples to them, and you're not at this point, and how to deal with things financially. Now, they, they don't get all that involved in it a lot, but it's, the basic thing is, again and again and again, when people come back in here, before you was Terry Benhart, you know, "We're gonna take care of this, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it," and it was all passive-aggressive behavior. It's not happening. You know, and the first question you ought to ask the auditor is, "Do you have the information so you can issue us an amended report?" To make sure that they can do that. Because if they can't do that, you don't want to waste money, any more money, because you already spent $14,400 on this, to get this kind of a report out of it. I mean, you know, it's exasperating from my, from my perspective. You know, when you see the number of youth organizations around the state that had their people embezzling money from them because they didn't have the internal financial controls in place, because everybody thought everybody else was honest, and they were all trying to go for the, for the benefit of the kids, okay? It's an awful temptation for some people. And, you know, and, you know, and I appreciate what they do, because I coached, I umped, I refed, you know, I did all those things when my daughter was coming through the, coming through the system in the 80s and 90s, okay? But the times have changed. The insistence of financial accountability has increased exponentially in the last 10 years. There's a lot of people that used to be in your position that have been spending time in jail, because they couldn't keep their hand out of the till. And, and the reason they couldn't do that is because there was no controls. And then they couldn't, then they couldn't demonstrate to their insurance carrier how much money was taken because they didn't have the financial control, so they couldn't recover the money. So it's, you know, it's very hard to sit up here for the time that I've spent on this, on this council, dealing with these kinds of issues, and hearing the same thing every year, the same assurances, the same issues, and they're not happening. It's really difficult. Thank you.
Anyone else? Jerry?
Thank you. While I agree with a lot of what Tom is saying, I wanted to thank you both for stepping up to a leadership position, because it is a thankless job. I have been in leadership positions in many organizations in this town, and you're new to this, you've just stepped up, and we don't need to be beating them about the head, which I feel kind of like Tom just did. That's, I, I don't, we, his frustration is not with you personally, it's with the process and what's happened. So please don't walk away thinking that this council doesn't appreciate the work that you're doing, because it is a lot of work, and it's thankless, and I, I for one, understand that. The issues about embezzlement and those kinds of things are very real issues, unfortunately. And when we're responsible for taxpayer money going to an organization that doesn't have the checks and balances, then that's something that we, as a town council, have to, we're responsible for taxpayer money. So I'm not sure what the answer is. Yes, we've been hearing this for a long time. I see a lot of progress has been made. I think we're definitely getting in the right direction. There is an incredible amount of turnover, and I don't know that that's anything that this organization can ever overcome. I personally think the part-time paid treasurer position might be the ticket to get you guys the stability that you need, so that the town, because I personally like the fact that the town supports the recreation efforts of the Merrimack Youth Association. I think it's a great cause for the town to support the, the youth in town. So I just don't want you to walk away thinking that we're all, that we're all taking it out on you personally, because we're not. And I really appreciate you coming here tonight too, knowing probably that you were gonna hear it. So thank you very much, and thank you for your time, and I'm hoping that we can figure out something that will work for everybody. Thank you, Nancy.
Anyone else? Okay, just, you know, I, I agree with both of these people. I've been on the council long enough. I want to say, and Tom, you have too, several years, and unfortunately, it sounds like we're killing the messenger, which is, I'm sure, what you're feeling like. And there is a certain amount of frustration. I think people come with all good intentions. You're not sitting there without the good intention of doing the best you can do. I have absolutely no hesitation in thinking that. There's nothing either one of you, or many of the people in the MYA, coaches and refs and all the rest, they're there for all the good reasons. And like, I'm sure most of them are saying, "This is bull. Why we have to put it up with this business?" But it is because exactly what Jody said, there's a responsibility. And I wish there was some way to convince you that 90, my belief is 90% would be solved if you did it part-time person, because then you wouldn't have to worry about consistency. We could yell at that person, not at you guys, because they would be responsible, and there would be consistency- would be consistency that goes from year to year to year. And as people turn over, a natural turnover, because your kids grow up, you know, you get involved in different things, that's absolutely the natural sequence. There is a person, and you don't have to keep on picking up the pieces. As people move, you have to pick up pieces. And it's like the fourth group of people in front of us. You're the fourth group. So I'm not sure how much I can emphasize that, that I don't see a change, I don't see a better outcome unless you do that. What's gonna change? With all good intentions, with all good intentions.
We don't disagree with you with the person, the part-time person, okay? We don't disagree with that. But when we have someone that's qualified to step up and take that role, but again, it was a mess. You all know that. It was a mess.
Because of that.
Okay? She has done a fantastic job.
I believe that.
Okay? So if she's volunteering her time while she's still here, who knows, after tonight?
[laughing]
Okay? That she can't do the job.
But perhaps, but there's a middle ground.
Let's give her a chance before we even look for someone else.
But there's a middle ground. I think you're saying in inner ear right now, if she's doing exactly what you're doing, that doesn't mean we don't need you anymore. You can still have a part-time person with people augmenting and assisting along the way.
I agree with that, but why have two people doing the same job butting heads?
Because two sets of eyes are better than one?
Well, it shouldn't be butting heads if you're using...
Now we have two, two hands in the till.
As opposed to, as opposed to how many organizations that have individual treasurers?
Finley?
You're apparently qualified. You spoke of working for, as an accountant in a corporation or what have you. I believe you're very qualified, and I agree, you don't have to hire somebody. If, you know, if you've given a commitment, hiring somebody doesn't change it if that person is part-time, you know, I don't know. I just think that if you can really, I can see the difficulties. You have a program who won't cooperate, I don't know. You know, I don't know what you do, even a hired person. If the person's not cooperating, there's gotta be something, I mean, I don't know if it's weekly receipt by you from these programs, and if they don't give it up, then you cease their oper, them specifically operating as treasurer for that program, and don't take it over yourself.
Right.
And I, and that's, if you, if you were to, if you do that, I'd be much more comfortable, because I'm not willing to pull the plug on the cash to you, but I definitely need some assurances, and even with the time, because I get how these volunteer things can become unraveled. I just, so if that could be a primary focus, you know, I'd be thrilled, and I'd be very content knowing that those programs are taken care of, because as Tom had said, it is for your protection, because even if the town didn't put a penny into it, you really should still do this and make it work, and so I guess...
Holly, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. Holly and I just met tonight. I'm sure she's very qualified to do it. The thing is, with a volunteer, it's just that, a volunteer. Nothing against Holly. I'm sure you have little kids.
I do.
And she's getting pulled in all different ways. If you are paying somebody to do it, pay Holly. If you're paying somebody to do it, now they have a responsibility to the organization to get it done. Because the problems in the past was always, it's a volunteer, they got other things, they're on vacation, they're here, they're there, wait a second, they gotta go over to this guy's house to get it. They moved, somebody else took over, you gotta get a box, oh, they threw out the box. If you have a paid position, they are responsible for all those records, they are responsible for the continuity, and they have responsibility. They can't use the excuse, oh, sorry, I gotta, my kid has, I gotta send my kid to camp in Texas, and I gotta drive him. No, they gotta find a way to get it done. Pay Holly. If that's what the MIA executive board wants to do, they can pay her. I just think with a paid position, it gives more continuity to the program.
I suspect, though, unless you're hiring an accountant from, from an established firm to come in and do that, if it's just a part-time person who is an accountant certified in all the correct ways, and they're part-time, and that's the only thing they're doing, you've got about as much commitment as a volunteer who is there, not getting paid with the same credentials. So if you're hiring an accountant from a firm that's established, and that person is dedicating four hours a week to the MIA, and they're working for somebody and they're held accountable, that's the only, gonna be the only way you have something different. You know, if your accountant's just working four hours a week, you know, as your, as your little gig, then there's no need to pay him if you have somebody who's capable and qualified with all the credentials. So I don't know...
Dan, you wanna say something?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, but before I do, I'm kinda prepping it as a motion in training, so to speak, to get some feedback. I think what we want is a professional accountant, I'm thinking, after everything Paula said and what we've heard, that we make a, make a motion similar to, we will no longer be making payments to the MIA until an accountant has been hired on a part-time basis, and that has to be spelled out, or full-time would make no difference, and you guys would have the freedom to hire anybody you'd want. But it seems to be that this council wants a professional to be hired to do their books, so maybe if we make a motion, kinda ordering them until the MIA hires a professional accountant, blah, blah, to take care of their books, all payment, all future payments to the organization will halt.
Behold. Is that a motion?
It's, oh, feedback first.
For now, open for discussion.
Open for discussion.
Anybody second on that motion? I'll second it for discussion.
Thanks.
Not that I agree, but it's for discussion. Jody?
I have a question. Is that something that you would address with the contract? That's going to expire, I mean, I don't know that the town council has jurisdiction over their executive board, that we could force them to hire someone? Wouldn't that be something that we'd have to deal with contractually when the contract expires? I believe the only thing we have control over is whether we give them the funds or not, personally.
Tom, you go ahead. Say what you...
Yeah, we ought not to be dictating how they organize their organization. What we ought to be saying is, there's certain standards we wanna, we wanna have observed, like two people signing a check, okay? And some kind of a check and balance on the process. I mean, some of the things that he's mentioning in here, we've been talking about this for the same period of time, and it hasn't been implemented yet, okay? But we not, we ought not to be telling them how to manage the organization. That's not what we're here for.
Well, I...
You're just trying to help.
You know, I've been, I've been here five years, and I've gone through it all, too, so it's been very fresh in my mind as a big subject. One of the things I said many years ago was, up your prices for your leagues so you don't need our money, and then you get to tell all of us to go to heck? That's always been an option, too, though, then you don't, there is no contract, and you run your own, you run your own show, and you don't, you don't have any supervision over...
But there is a contract.
I've said that to a few people to MIA over the years, and they said, you know, why, why does our money mean that much to you if you can't do it the way we're asking you to? Then just say, you know what, we're, we'll get, we'll do other, more fundraising, we'll, we'll increase the price of the programs, but thanks, town and Merrimack, we're no longer gonna take your money, we're gonna run it our own way, and it's an out.
That's not the out we're looking for. We don't want to do that. We want to do it the right way.
Then I would say, order them to hire an accountant.
But you can't. So we have a motion on the floor. Why don't we clean this up before further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you wanna?
Unless he's...
Speak to it.
If Holly gets $5 a week, I guess that's a hired paid professional, so I don't get the point, I guess.
I said it was a work in progress.
I appreciate it.
It was an attempt.
Okay. I'll call a question.
All those in favor say aye. I guess that loses.
It's all right.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. 1-6-0, and the only one forward is Dan Dwyer. I would like to...
Welcome to the club, Dan.
I would like to make a suggestion. I think, and it sounds a little cruel, so bear with me, basically, I'm not a cruel person. I think we have to write a letter, again, of noncompliance to cover the bases, related to the number 17 point of not having internal controls. And then we hold the money until they demonstrate they have internal controls, as determined by Paul.
So I'm thinking that that's my chance to say that I've made a commitment, and that hopefully by, you know, we will commit to try and make that change happen before the end. I only have six months, so, and then we're gonna go through this again. Only, I won't have been on the board as of September. It will have been at least, I'll have six months.
But you can work with Paul.
Yeah.
He can have, right?
It's a...
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I've, the auditing firm that I've, I've worked with them in the past, so I chose them because I know that they would support me in my effort to try and get us uniform and internal controls and training and, you know, all that goes with that.
Seconded.
Okay, so I have a motion...
Understand that it's a 30-day notice. Per the terms of the contract, it's a 30-day notice.
So what kind of changes would you guys need to see in 30 days?
To me...
I mean, because...
Well, 30 days for compliance, you mean?
Goal, yeah.
See, I wasn't putting it 30 days unless you're saying it's in the contract. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
They have to respond to a noncompliance within 30 days?
Yes.
Okay, so can part of the motion be that they will not receive any more money until we get insurance that internal controls are in place?
But Holly raises a good point. What specifically do they need to provide?
To be determined by Paul. He's the...
There's, there's four of them in the audit report. There's four of them in there.
Right.
Okay? That they, that they felt were the major issues that were involved in there, okay? To get those things in place. So there's a, there's, that's the starting point for you. Those four items need to be dealt with in some fashion. I understand that centralizing your books is gonna be like pulling teeth, okay? Because they, a lot of them aren't gonna want to give it up. A lot of them are gonna feel inadequate because they don't keep...
Receipts and all that.
Yeah, they don't keep what would be considered a good set of books, okay? It works, but if you were to look at it in terms of what you needed to back everything up, eh, there's a receipt here that's not there, there's a deposit slip that's not there. There's other pieces that go on, and they feel that in some way that, that makes them look bad, okay? So that piece, that piece is gonna be the longest piece, in my opinion, that you're gonna have to deal with, is trying to get their commitment and compliance to funnel that material to you, so that you can make sure that you're, they're doing the right things. And I think that's the biggest one, but the other pieces in there are pretty simple, from my perspective.
So we could say, as recommended by the report?
Yeah.
And do we have to put in the motion, an extension of the 30 days to a time certain?
It's a contractual issue.
Well, but we can take a vote to extend that time beyond 30 days.
Well, why don't you have Paul come back in 30 days and let us know what's going on?
Oh, there you go.
Okay? And then if things are, if there is progress there, then we have something to work with. And if there isn't progress there, then we write him another letter.
To be reviewed within 30 days.
Correct.
Okay? But for now, to have the letter of noncompliance sent, so that we're making it, we're documenting our information related to the contract number 17, related to internal controls, and that within, no money will be provided until the council gives the approval. In the meantime, 30 days from now, we will receive a report. Should we extend a little bit more? It is Christmas.
Yeah, I agree.
Right now, you're looking at January 17th.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go to, let's go to, let's go to first meeting in February.
Yeah.
Well, that's the 11th, that's a budget hearing.
But I can give you, I could give you a written...
You can give us interims.
Interims on this stuff.
Excellent.
And if you just, the report is the management letter. If we could just say it's the management letter, because there's several reports, it's the management letter.
Okay, so, as recommended by the management letter.
Correct.
Hopefully, whoever's typing this up understands. And do you want to second that?
I reaffirm that.
I haven't made a motion in a long time. So a motion made by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any other discussion? Sounds like a reasonable, how's that sound? Reasonable? I think, okay, I'll do the vote, and then I'll say a word. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And Dan Dwyer's not here at the moment, so it's gonna be 6-0-0. And the only thing I want to finish is, I want to be, hopefully reflect my intention that I also want to support you, and I want to continue that. But at the same time, there has to be a reckoning, and it's not against you guys, it's against the organizational's inability to get their act together. And somehow, we have to make it do that, for your own good as much as for us, okay? So hopefully, and I know your intention is good, too, hopefully you understand our intention is, too. We want to support that, but it's gone on for a long time. Okay, yes, Tom?
Just to summarize from my perspective, like, like several of the others, I've been here for several years, we've gone through this over and over again. This is not an attempt to discredit or to blame you folks, but we've heard the same thing year after year. And I know we've said that at this counter already, but the gallo's in here last year said, she was coming in new, she was fresh, she was working on it, maybe it was the year before, I'm not sure, I'm starting to lose my memory. But, and so I have a lot of confidence in your ability, but I'm concerned that, as Finley and others have pointed out, we're seeing, we're hearing the same story year to year, because we have volunteers, because of whatever, it's, it's critical that we get these controls in place that can be passed to the next person, so that we're not having to start from ground zero each time. And we can't turn back and say, well, I just started this, so I don't know, so I can't explain. We have to get beyond that, and it's not necessarily us, it's you guys. If you don't have those protections for yourselves, that could end up being a court situation if something goes awry, and, and we can't protect you. You're, you're in a situation where you're, you're handling a half a million dollars of taxpayers' money, other people's money, and you've gotta be, you've gotta be responsible for that, and careful for it. So I commend you for your efforts, and I, I hope we can get this together. I'd like to think that we can make progress, and we'll see where it goes in the next 30 days. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, you can say, Tom, you go yourself.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You think the excuse is sister coming in from Boston or something?
Yeah, right? Thanks, nice to meet you.
Okay, new business. Road acceptance of Pollard Road and Lexi Circle by Kyle. Come on down, Kyle. The planning board meeting on December 1st, 2015, per subdivision regulation, section 5.01.1, colon F, not colon, parentheses F. The planning board has released the performance bond in favor of the two-year maintenance bond, and recommended acceptance of Pollard Road and Lexi Circle by the town council. Acceptance of the road is conditional, conditioned upon receipt of the two-year maintenance bond in the amount of 107 million?
Thousand.
107,000.
There's a dot there.
Oh, it's a dot, not a comma. Okay. And I have my glasses on. 107,574 and 40 cents.
That's gonna be Kyle's Christmas bonus.
That is a pretty big bond, is what I was thinking. Go ahead, Kyle.
Okay. Thanks for having me here tonight. As you mentioned, I'm here to pass on the planning board's recommendation to accept Pollard Road and Lexi Circle, which is part of the Wildwood Acres subdivision. Pollard Road was originally a, prior to this project, was a private road that had, I think, just one house on it. It was previously called Birch Hill Road sometime in the distant past. The subdivision was approved by the planning board in August of 2013, and the contractor did a really nice job building it, and work started in March of 2014, and they're now complete, building some pretty nice homes out there, and Public Works has done all the inspection work, and we're definitely recommending that the roads be accepted by the town council for maintenance by the town.
Very good. Questions? Yes? Finley?
So construction of the road is complete. This maintenance bond is, is just in case there is an issue?
Yeah, it's a, anytime a road is accepted, we require a two-year maintenance bond, and what that covers is any, any deformities in the work that, that show up within the first two years. We, being a, a limited staff that, that we are, we don't have the, the luxury of inspecting the project full-time. So we rely on the contractor to build the job respec. And we do our intermittent inspections as we can. This two-year maintenance bond allows us some luxury for, um, having some security that the, the job will last. And typically, um, the, the projects do last. What, what you might see is if a, a small crack might develop, um, we've had contractors go back and, and do some crack sealing. If the grass doesn't grow, it, it's typically very minor things, if anything at all. My experience has been the, the projects go through the maintenance bond barrier without any, any faults at all.
Sure. The, I, I was just thinking of a road that, um, uh, work was performed. And, uh, I thought it was, there was a maintenance bond that covered the final coat, which I guess was missing on that project. And, uh, when finally, the work was never completed, the town, I believe we had to go in and take care of it. And the cost actually exceeded what I thought was a maintenance bond. So maybe that was the original bond for the road.
Is it Valley View, the church?
No, I'm thinking of Merrill.
Okay.
And so, um, so that's why I didn't know. I thought that was the maintenance bond, but that was the original bond for that project. And we hadn't even issued a maintenance.
Right, because the road had never, the, the project had never been completed. So the, the, the maintenance bond was never installed. And when the bond was called, there wasn't enough money left in the bond to cover the remainder of the work.
Right, because accepting the road means we now own it.
Correct.
So, okay, that's, I just need that clarification. I appreciate that.
Until town council accepts the road, even though it's built, planning board has recommended acceptance, public works can do no maintenance on it. Once, once the road is accepted, legally, it becomes a class-five road instead of a private road. And now town has full maintenance responsibility for the road.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just in time to plow it.
That's why these always happen in December.
We put this out to them. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those, uh, let's say we have a type of motion.
Move to accept Pollard Road and Lexi Circle as recommended by the, uh, planning board. Uh, and to accept the, uh, conditioned upon the receipt of a two-year maintenance bond in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Tom Mayhoun, seconded by Tom Kinnick. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None. Seven, zero, zero. Thank you, Kyle.
Very good, thank you all. You too, thanks.
Okay, uh, you're gonna, where'd Paul go?
He's out in the hall.
You're earning your money tonight. Motion to intervene FERC proceedings submitted by now Assistant Town Manager, um, Paul McKelley. Town council discussed intervening in the FERC proceedings on the Kinda Morgan application. This has been, uh, we've been waiting for this. I know that there was, we had to wait until the, after the application was made. And then we had a window of twenty-something days.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days. So, there has been, um, a suggestion made, and there is one correction or addition that needs to be done even for dis, before discussion on page two. We need to add the hospice facility on that listing of properties. It's not presently on there. Okay, so I would open this up for discussion, Tom?
No, I'm just curious why, why we need to add that. I mean, this is a request to FERC to intervene or status. If they're not on there, that doesn't mean we can't intervene in their behalf.
Oh, I understand. But we're listing all of them anyway, so we might as well, if there's something we knew we forgot, we might as well just add it. It's with the rest of the places, that's all. And you're right, it wouldn't matter in the end. Since we haven't submitted it yet, it affects it. Okay. Any other discussions or questions?
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council file a motion to intervene before the United States of America's Federal Energy Regulatory Commission as relates to the application by Kinda Morgan slash Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company LLC, document number PF fourteen hyphen twenty-two hyphen zero, zero.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mayhoun. Any discussion? Yes, Judy?
Thank you. Obviously, no surprise to everybody, I support this motion. Just, um, there have been just multitudes and multitudes of intervenor motions filed. And a lot of them are coming in from municipalities. And, um, they just had an opportunity to meet before we did. But the Merrimack School District has recently, um, formally filed a motion to intervene, as well as the Merrimack Village District. So, it would be the town council following suit with the other municipalities in town to, uh, engage in the process. Thank you.
And my understanding is really the purpose of intervening status is it allows us the legal right to express our opinion regarding the process and the information. Is that correct, Tom? Is that reasonable?
Yes, it gives us, it gives us standing. And in giving us standing, if there is some, um, objection to, or some part of the law that we feel that FERC did not comply with, we could proceed to US, to the, through the federal court system.
We have the right.
Right. Yeah, however, understand that, uh, this is an adminis, as I've said before, this is an administrative law proceeding. Uh, so there has to be an error of law in their decision before we'll have any chance of success at that, at that type of a, at that type of a proceeding.
That's gonna, it's gonna take a long time for that decision to be made, too.
One year.
One year, yeah. But we have to be able to make this motion to intervene within that time limit.
Right, and if, and if there were any hearings and we didn't do this, we couldn't participate.
That's correct.
Um, and, and that's very important, in my opinion. And we also are in receipt of information as a result of having intervenor status. So we're in, um, the, all the information that comes in and is available to everyone is available to us.
At some point, they're gonna issue a calendar that lays out everything that's gonna happen. Yeah, timeline hearings and deadlines and those sorts of things. So, you know, we get that, uh, notification also.
Finley? Oh, I'm sorry, Paul?
Thank you, Chairman Harrington. Right from the FERC page, an intervenor is an official party to, to the proceedings and enjoys distinct advantages over those who only file comments. Intervenors have the right to participate in hearings before the FERC's administrative law judges file briefs, file for rehearing of a commissioner's decision, have legal standing in the Court of Appeals if they challenge the commissioner's final decision, and be placed on a service list to receive copies of case-related commissions, commissions, documents, and filings by other intervenors.
Perfect.
So you're a step above just somebody who is filing comments.
Yep.
Okay, any other, yeah, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, so we have a motion on the table. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, seven, zero, zero.
Oh. Could I have that changed? The document number's incorrect. And I apologize, she's absolutely right. Thank you.
The document number...
Can you have the document number be reworded to C is in Charlie, P is in Papa, dash?
Hold on, hold on, let's, uh... Okay, under the document number, go ahead.
C is in Charlie, P is in Papa, dash sixteen, dash twenty-one, dash zero, zero, zero. Three zeros.
CP dash, let me just verify. CP dash sixteen, dash twenty-one, uh, dash zero, zero, zero. You got it, Paul?
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you better tell Joanna, she may wanna...
Yeah.
...comment her, you know, her filing.
Right. Got it, Paul? Excellent. Thank you, everyone, okay.
Curses of cut and paste.
I'll tell ya. Okay, last on the new business. Presentation of proposed sixteen, seventeen Town Manager Budget going to be presented by Paul McKelley. We're all really looking forward to this, Paul.
Make it good, make it good.
Are we gonna make it?
Plenty of time.
No, we're gonna make it done by ten o'clock?
You've got plenty of time.
All right, time, plenty of time. It depends on his, yeah, what do you mean, plenty of time? Your time or our time?
Hey, wouldn't be the first time I spent, yeah, meeting until two o'clock in the morning.
You and me both, yeah.
I spoke with one of the, one of the former selectmen in Palaboo hired me. And I told him that we had eliminated the municipal budget committee, he almost fell over.
With envy?
Yes.
Okay, Paul, oh, we're still waiting for your signal, okay. Talk among yourselves.
Yeah.
You just call Boyd when you need him, throw in airtime.
Just gotta make sure I point this high. I wanna point Nancy if I have to.
What is that? Are you insinuating?
How did you do that?
Have you checked it out?
No.
Why not? It could be. Okay, turn on your microphone, Nancy. All set, Paul?
All set, thank you. Uh, coming for you tonight to discuss the Town Manager's Budget Proposal for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget. As... Is that better?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Is that better? Okay.
A, as you know, there are always two portions to the tax rate. And when we look at the budget, we have to take into account our revenues and our appropriations. When we were before you, I think in the beginning of November, we talked about a decrease in revenues of about three hundred thousand dollars. Since then, we looked at some of our other revenues, and there's gonna be some increases in revenues to offset that shortfall of the three hundred thousand dollar insurance rebates. Motor vehicle permits are, are running about four point two million dollars. So we felt that we could increase motor vehicle permits a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over the fifteen, sixteen budget. Cable franchise fees, fifty thousand dollars would go to general government. Additional fifty thousand dollars would go to general government to make that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total. Right now, we receive about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in franchise, cable franchise fees. Ambulance revenue, uh, we're doing a very good job of collecting. The court went to electronic filing, and it's amazing how many more people are paying because they're actually getting notification from the sheriff that's official, booking instead of a yellow piece of paper. And they're paying, and our revenues are up. And of course, our runs are up, which also means our revenues are gonna be up. Uh, miscellaneous is about five thousand dollars. There's a lot of pluses in here, minuses throughout the account. And sale of property is about a twenty thousand dollar increase over the two thousand fifteen, sixteen year for a net revenue decrease of approximately only twenty-five thousand dollars. Some more budget highlights for appropriations. Our property liability came in with a guaranteed maximum rate of seven percent. PLT is our property liability. That's about fifteen thousand dollar increase. The big one is the fifty-third week of payroll. And this happens every, between five and seven years, depending on how leap year falls and how June ends and July begins. That's about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Excuse me. We signed some very lucrative contracts for our electrical and natural gas. Um, the increase is, is eighteen thousand dollars. Vehicle maintenance, some of our vehicles need some maintenance. And, and we're trying to get more out of our vehicles. Instead of buying a new vehicle, we're trying to prolong them and do some minor repairs, such as front ends and, and dump bodies and things of that sort. It's about seventeen thousand. Uh, street sweeping, to go along with our permit, we have to increase that about seven thousand dollars. Office and communication equipment, about nine thousand dollars. Our tipping fees are increasing one dollar per ton, or approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. Right now, we're...
Paul, there's a quick question?
Yeah.
Unless I'm, unless I'm reading this, thank you incorrectly, it says, street sweeping seventeen thousand dollars.
They're, they didn't line up, they're offline.
Well, let me, let me see. Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the spacing got messed up.
He's bringing in seven thousand.
So it's increasing seven thousand dollars? What do we pay for street sweeping? I'm curious.
Fifty-six thousand dollars a year.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Our, our tipping fee's increasing a dollar. That's the contract that we negotiated. And thirty-four thousand dollars, uh, next year, our tipping fee will be about sixty-eight dollars a ton. Our recycling tipping fee, we're actually paying to get rid of our recyclables now. We signed a co, three-year contract. Where we in the second year of our contract, it went up to fifteen dollars a ton. It's about fifteen hundred tons that we do in recycling. It still takes money out of our stream. Fifteen versus sixty-eight, we're saving fifty-three thou, fifty-three dollars a ton by still paying this fifteen for recycling. Uh, the recycling market basically has fallen off.
Tom, did you ever?
No, I just, I was hoping he would give us that def, delta number because we're actually saving fifty-three dollars a ton by doing the recycling.
Right.
Even though it is costing us something to get rid of it.
Right, and we have increased the rate to commercial haulers who come in and dump recycling. So we're charging them for the recycling, that fifteen dollars a ton.
We did a couple of years ago, right?
Correct. Correct, we're just matching what we're paying to the commercial haulers.
It hasn't been increased since that last time.
Correct. Correct. Library materials increased about six thousand dollars.
Above and beyond this year's budget.
Correct, this is in addition to what's, what was in the budget from last, from fifteen sixteen.
From, so these are increases from last year?
How much was library materials last year or this year? Do, any roughly?
Around seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars in that, in that range.
Talking about an eight or nine percent increase?
Yeah. Yeah.
And so when, to follow up, Tom, on that, if that's a concern, when, sorry, I'm blanking on our name.
Of that.
If that comes, that would be a reasonable question, yeah. So I thought of the same thing, Tom, when you said that.
Mm-hmm. The guaranteed maximum rate for health insurance came in at six point four percent, or additional seventy-seven thousand dollars. Miscellaneous wage adjustments are fifty thousand dollars. Elections is, there's one additional election in the sixteen, seventeen year, that's about nine thousand dollars. Last Rest Cemetery. Last Rest Cemetery came to the Town Manager and myself to discuss, uh, the portion of Last Rest Cemetery, that is the town-owned portion, the town cemetery, which is the portion that is right off of Bluezook Lake Road, that section in there. There, some, they need to do some maintenance and things, and they were looking for some help. Basically, what they were doing is they were using their capital fund to kinda do the maintenance on our portion of the cemetery. So we figured five thousand dollars, so that in that portion would be reasonable for, for the maintenance of, of the town tomb and, and those plots that are in the front. You gotta remember, a lot of those, uh, back in the eighteen hundreds, when they gave a dollar, was a lot of money. But you're not making a lot of money on a dollar, especially with the interest rates the way they are. So it's to help offset the cost of maintaining that town portion of, of the cemetery. They're also looking at expanding, and they have a plan to expand their next phase out. So they have a plan to keep expanding more towards the hillside, on Hillside Drive, or Hillside Terrace. So they're gonna keep on expanding towards the back portion of the cemetery. Miscellaneous is thirty-three thousand dollars. Once again, that's the pluses and minuses throughout the budget. It could be five hundred up, six hundred down. It comes out to about thirty-three thousand dollars. Overtime is a big increase.
You forgot the adult community.
Uh, oh, adult community, sorry. Adult Community Center is seven thousand dollars. The Adult Community Center is looking to get some help in painting the inside of the building. It hasn't been painted in a while. And, uh, the two front doors, the two glass front doors, I guess, because, so the way one opens in and one opens out, it's not fire code.
The fire marshal has said they have to be replaced.
Yeah, they have to be replaced, so that money's in the budget. So those two projects are about seven thousand dollars more. Overtime is another big increase of $123,000. Highway, I'll leave fire, I'll come back to fire. Highway's about $15,000. What we're trying to do is, over the last three or four years, we're just trying to get, we did an average, and we're just trying to get the overtime that we've been spending in highway up to where we've been spending it for the last three or four years. Solid waste is about $7,000. The interesting about, thing about solid waste, and I've been racking my brain for the last two or three years, and I finally figured it out, is that when they bring in help on a Saturday, it's overtime for solid waste. It might not be because they work Tuesday through Saturday, but if one of the gentlemen who works Tuesday to Saturday takes the day off, the help they're bringing in to cover for that guy who takes the day off...
Has already worked 40.
Has already worked his 40 because he works Monday to Friday. So that's why their overtime has increased. So we're just trying to inch up their overtime to more accurately reflect what's been going on. Miscellaneous overtime, that includes police, communications, town government, all the other departments, about $4,000. And then not fire, the $97,000 for fire. When we looked at this, the fire chief, Eileen, myself, and the two assistant fire chiefs, we looked at potentially bringing in, we looked at the calls, we looked at the runs, we looked at duplicate runs and things of that sort. We looked at potentially bringing in four new firefighters. And then we looked at bringing in four new firefighters for a half a year. The yearly cost for four new firefighters is roughly $372,000. That's because you can't just bring in one. They work 24-hour shifts, and there's four battalions, so to speak. And so you would have to bring four in to even it out. When we looked at that, then we looked at a half a year, and a half a year was gonna cost us about $183,000. Well, we looked at the fire department and said, okay, when we were looking at the staffing and what would it take to staff the fire department? And we figured that the cheaper way to do this was to increase their overtime by $97,000 instead of bringing in four new guys with their benefits and the health insurance and retirement and things of that sort, which was gonna cost $183,000. So we thought it would be better to come in and increase their overtime $97,000.
Do you see the 97 is on top of what last year's budget was?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Which was 500 something?
If you combine both accounts, it was roughly about 500.
Now, this is for half year or whole year?
That's the whole year for the overtime. So we're getting overtime for a whole year of additional $97,000. When the fire department comes in during their budget, we'll expand and really get into the detail and the number of shifts and how we came up with the scenario. But right now, it's not...
It's an overview.
It's an overview of about $97,000 increase in overtime between the supervisors and the firefighters themselves.
Right.
So that's a combination, that 97. Total increases of about $816,000 on this budget. Of course, we have some savings. Debt service, our debt's going down, $14,000. Compensated absences, compensated absences is, we have to accrue or account for people's vacation times. And what happens with compensated absence is, I look ahead and say, okay, all these people are eligible to retire. And if they're eligible to retire, they will cost us X if they leave for vacation time, sick time, buyout, and whatever they have accrued leave for. So we account for that portion of these gentlemen and ladies who are eligible to retire. And basically, what that does, if, for instance, I'm eligible to retire out of general government, I leave. I might have $5,000, $10,000, whatever I might have in accrued benefits for my vacation and sick time. It doesn't hit the department, so then the department goes out of whack. This is savings for the future of people who we think are eligible to retire, and if they retire, we're just accounting for it. So it doesn't unfairly hit that one department. And not to get, we talked a lot about audits, but this is one of those audit things that they tell you you have to account for when you're looking for it. You gotta set up a fund, basically, to fund these retirements. Other capital and building maintenance, that came down about $62,000. And dispatcher and animal control officer, I'll talk about that on the next slide. It's a savings of about $16,000. For total savings of $125,000. Total general fund increase of $691,000.
Paul?
Yes?
Back over to the first, back over to the first page. You have Plitt on here. I thought you were at Primex for the workers' comp and...
We are. That's our property liability.
So the property liability is still...
With Primex.
Right.
It's with Primex, right.
Okay.
And that's gonna increase, it's a 7% GMR for a $15,000 increase.
Okay.
Okay? We are with Primex.
Because I see Plitt and I see something else.
I understand that. No, we are not with...
Who have been told they can no longer issue policies and go out of business.
Now, don't you feel better?
Well, I just...
So I know just what you're talking about. There was an announcement.
We had an opportunity to take a look at our dispatcher area and our animal control officer through vacancies. What we're gonna, what we're proposing is, we're proposing to reduce two per-time dispatchers, which are vacant positions, which have been very hard to fill, which have been very hard to keep people in the jobs once they're filled. And we're gonna add a full-time dispatcher. That, there wouldn't be a net cost of $27,000. We didn't wanna increase our full-time staffing, so we looked, we had an opportunity where our animal control officer just got promoted to a police officer. So we brought the police chief in, and working with the police chief, he felt that we could reduce the full-time animal control officer to a part-time position, saving $43,000, net savings to the budget, $16,000, to get a full-time dispatcher who'll work a shift, regular shift, and be in there, and it'll be more conducive to the organization and actually support the organization better by bringing in another dispatcher. These are the pretty colored sheets that have a bunch of different colors, and we break out it in the colors for a reason so that as we go forward in other sheets, it's easier to identify. The first column is the total appropriation of what is the town manager's proposing for the general fund. And remember, this is just the general fund on the top half here. So it's all the departments, general government assessing, fire, police, all the way down the line, debt service. And that, what the departments are asking for, what the town manager's proposing is $28,654,835. Well, to do apples-to-apples comparison from year to year, we decided to pull out our capital reserve deposits. This year, we're proposing $1.6 million in capital reserve deposits. Then we have these one-time capital building maintenance items throughout the budget that might be there one year and might not be there the next year. We're proposing $194,500. Always like to show the road infrastructure and paving of the asphalt account, $750,000. And then our capital reserve fund expenditures, which we save for. In prior years, $4,058, basically $4 million. That number also includes the state portion, what we're getting for the TAP grant and what we're getting for the bridge. Because we're proposing a bridge, we're proposing Bedford Road Bridge. So we're getting 80% of the Bedford Road Bridge, so that's in that figure of $3.7 million.
So we have to list what we're getting from the state...
Correct.
As a capital expenditure.
Correct. It's gross appropriation. The state of New Hampshire has an RSA that says towns have to gross appropriate. So you have to include for all your appropriations.
This is exactly the kind of explanation. It's difficult for citizens to understand.
Right. Right?
And it wasn't many years ago that we didn't do it this way, that in fact, we held public hearings to do that. And this is a more honest, transparent way to do it, but it is a little more difficult. Because when you see from $22 million to $28 million from one year to the next, it can be frightening.
But we don't like, just with this, almost $4 million, literally is one capital reserve fund, that means we've already got the money there. We're gonna be spending it.
Right. We're spending our savings account for what we saved for.
Or state.
Yeah, and the state money. So total operating, total operating fund request is $22 million for the general fund. The blue portion underneath here, that's my mouse, right here, this blue portion, or this blue portion in this area is what we call self-supporting funds. These are things like outside details, which outside vendors pay for. Daycamp, which is derived of Daycamp revenues. Fire protection, which is, you know, fire protection services off of Manchester Street. Basically, Penechek's providing that, and we get billed for that, and then we bill the people who are actually involved in that water, that fire district. And wastewater, which is an enterprise fund, and wastewater debt. So total enterprise funds is $5.7 million. We'll see an offsetting revenue of $5.7 million. They're self-supporting. Comparing apples-to-apples comparison from 2015 to 2016, net increase is about $586,000, or a 2.7% increase from 15-16 to 16-17. And those increases are made up of things that I highlighted earlier, the overtime and street sweeping and personnel costs and the variations. Capital reserve funds. In 15-16, we had $1.4 million welcome for $1.6 million. It's an increase of $166,000. Not too long ago, we were only putting $300,000 in our capital reserve funds. And we were still spending the four, $3 to $4 million. So we brought our capital reserve fund balances down. We'd like to see... About three years ago, the town manager came in. She'd like to see about a million dollars put into the capital reserve funds. That's the minimum. We're trying to make up for those years where we had $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 that we were putting in. So we're trying to make up for those years and the $1.6 million this year. Other building and other capital. South Fire Station, Station 2, we need to do some renovations at that building. That, the whole looking at whether we're gonna build a new station has been moved out another year, and there are some improvements that we need to do down there. Parks and Recreation went from $40,000 down to $3,000 for small stuff. Highway equipment is a wash day, $11,000 versus $12,000. Building maintenance and highway went from $7,500, which was a roof repair, down to about $18,500, which is a fire alarm system upgrade to code. Police vehicles, library maintenance, and then building and grounds. The building grounds repairs is, we're looking at windows for the East Building and seeing, you know, those windows are, when the building was built, what, in the 80s, Tom? About 30 years old now?
Yeah.
So we're looking at maybe upgrading to get some efficiency out of those windows so we don't have the breeze blowing through.
It was right before Mr. Rothhouse was first elected.
So it's that East Building over. The East Building. And then road infrastructure is zero. And then, as you'll see, general fund before capital reserve expenditures is $690,842. That was the $691,000 that we showed in our highlights, or a 2.89% increase. Then we have our capital fund expenditures of $4 million. Total general fund, $28,654. Capital reserve funds, this is a sheet to show, like I said, $365,000, 2010-11, $500, 974. We're making up for those years. We've been slowly creeping it up. We're at $1.6 million. We're spending about $1.4 million of our money out of our capital reserves. And then an additional, excuse me, $2.6 million of state bridge aid and TAP grant. So for a total of $4 million. These are the projects that we're proposing on the capital reserve fund. Licenses in computer service, computer service upgrades of $30,000. Pickup truck, forestry truck for '85, a boat for '15, and that's a bag and a boat was what the fire department calls it. That's the boat that they, if they don't have a boat launched, that's the boat that they take to get into the rivers and streams and to get river rescues, where four guys can carry the boat through the woods to get into a waterway. And then thermal imaging cameras, excuse me, cameras, that would be two cameras for $40,000. Upgrade to our GIS system, that's the aerial photography. Our aerial photography is over 10 years old. As we know, over the last several months, that's been very helpful in finding routes and finding properties and boundaries and...
Is this the last, wasn't that like three years or...
That was three years of savings. We started at 10, 65... This will be the third year. We're putting $65,000 in this year, but we're taking out the $135,000. So here, River Trail gross appropriating $586,000. Of that, $436,000 is TAP funds. The Bedford Road Bridge, $2.7 million, of which $2.1 million is state bridge aid. So the bridge is gonna cost us roughly $540,000. De-watering improvements, when we do roads, if we need to increase our drainage, things of that sort, $100,000. We've been trying to replace our older dump trucks, $170,000. And then the sidewalk tractor is a lawnmower, and that is the sidewalk plow with the snow blower attachment to clean the sidewalks in the wintertime. And then sidewalk parking lot repairs at the library for $45,000, for a total of $4 million. And then you'll see the sewer infrastructure ones for about $248,000.
Finley?
I can't recall. Is that a replacement for the sidewalk tractor H43? Was that a replacement?
Yeah, that's gonna be a replacement for the one, and that one's becoming, it breaks down a lot more. It's in there probably twice, twice a month, maybe even once a week at some points during the wintertime, breaking down. Total general fund, the two, $28 million, $654,000. See the self-supporting funds. Total, grand total of all funds, $34,336. Summary of revenues, non-tax revenues, gonna increase $274,000. Insurance rebate, Health Trust, we're losing that. Health Trust told us that we're not, we're not gonna see a rebate next year. So $300,000. Capital funds, coming and going, increase of $1.3 million. Self-supporting funds, increase of $831,000. Below, you'll see the sale of property, which is talked about, ambulance fee, cable franchise fees, motor vehicle permits, miscellaneous, $274,000. Whether increased revenues, insurance rebate, $300,000. And then negative, $25,000 in the negative on our revenues.
So what do you see as the sale of property?
Sale of property is any truck, any vehicle, any fixed asset that is for sale. We've been... My purchasing agent, Ms. Simpson, has been incredible. She's put stuff on eBay, she's put stuff on municipal bid, she's put stuff and looked at other things. We, whatever, we sell tables, we sell chairs, we sell video cameras, we sell whatever is good enough to sell based on municipal law. That says if it's bought with appropriated dollars from taxpayers, you need to sell it. You need to have an auction to sell it, and we use every auction imaginable, and we go out there and we sell things. We've sold tires, we sold rims that we have left over, things that, that's what we sell. Anything that's capital or anything that can be sold, we sell.
Now, is that based on a moving average?
Yes.
For the appropriation?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. And if, the other thing too, is if we take a tax-dated property, that would be included in that, sell property.
So $25,000 decrease in general fund revenues. Opposed taxes, we talked about the $22 million of general fund operating, the $1.6 million capital reserve, other capital, $194,000. Go down, there's your $34,366,000. We're offsetting the revenues of $18 million, so total is $18 million worth of revenue. Overlays, $375,000. As you all know, for next December, we're gonna have a revale. Usually in a revale year. Right now, we're in the mid-90s of our fair market value versus our assessment. So in that case, property values will go up. So we need to plan for some additional abatements. Veterans credits right now is about $691,000.
Those are going down, aren't they?
Those are going down. Those are, we were over $700,000 about two years ago, and now we're down to $691,000. Now, to be raised by taxes is just a smidgen over $17 million. You divide that by the value, which is about two point, almost $3 billion. It's $2... It's $2,967,701,632. Increase in the tax rate, current is 549. The proposed tax rate with this budget is 573, an increase of 24 cents. We still have some pending items. And these will be pending, we're in the second year of the state budget. The only two items left really of revenues that we get from the state is rooms and meals and highway block grant. And there's always talk about what we're gonna do, if we're gonna get more, if we're gonna get less. So, those are on there. And of course, we are negotiating six union contracts. We like to break out our 2015 tax bill, how it's broken out over the last 15 years. And it just shows the bottom portion, the dark blue is the school. The aqua color is the municipality. And the orange portion is your county. And that's how your tax dollars have been broken out over the years. Average home value in the town of Merrimack is $250,000 for our tax bill for 2015. You'd pay about $6,180. Of that, $1,372 is the municipality. And that is for police, fire, DPW, solid waste, library, general government, tax collector, assessing, all those, community development, all those divisions. And school would be $4,483, or 72% of your tax bill goes to tax, your tax would go towards the school. Any questions, comments?
What is the unreserve fund balance?
Our unreserve fund balance is about $5 million now.
Okay. And wasn't there a percentage that was suggested?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight percent.
Thank you.
And we're at about, just over four?
We're just over four.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Dan?
On the fire department, I'm just a little... Maybe the numbers are just a little scary to me. I was trying to... This budget reflects a request of adding four new guys.
No. No, it does not.
Oh, it does not?
Does not. We just, we decided to use overtime instead of adding four new guys.
So, if you got the, I think 500,000, I'm not comfortable with that number to begin with. I just think that as an overtime number, that's really, I'm gonna use the word, it's outrageous. It's just too much. So, we're gonna go from 500,000 to almost 600,000. And it doesn't make sense to hire four guys and in return get overtime budget to a more reasonable number? Like you're... I just don't understand. There comes to be a number where a number on overtime should be maybe like 100,000. Does it mean you need eight men? Does you need 12 men? At what point do you say overtime's not even necessary because we have the right amount of men? But if every year, year in and year out, we're gonna be spending 600 grand in overtime, I just have a hard time with that number. It's just, I had a hard time, number with it last year as well.
It will be about 600.
It will be about 600,000.
So, I think it's a reasonable question. And that's the kind of information that has to be presented.
And we, fire chief and his two assistants will be able to...
One, did you wanna make sure that I was getting the right thing? That they're, that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, at some point, the amount of overtime is it worth just getting the four positions?
Right.
So, you have to compare, yeah.
Yeah. And, yes. And you have to look at, and they can explain it more.
But I understand your point.
But I...
Like, if the answer is, we say yes to four, but I don't have a guarantee of overtime going down much, then that, you know, that's a bit of a problem too. You know, if they say, yes, well, let's put four new guys, but our overtime budget still will be 350, there's still something that's more expensive.
I think that's why they came to that conclusion and come to it sometimes.
Yes. And we can explain it more in detail. And we'll make sure that when we come in front of the council with the fire department, we'll be able to have that discussion with you in more detail.
And in comparison.
In comparison. And we did look at that. We looked at adding four new guys and splitting the year and, you know... And finally, we came up and said, okay, what is your overtime number? Let's look at your overtime number. We went back and there was several iterations, several meetings between myself and the fire department going back and forth on what do you need for overtime? And going, looking at vacations and sick time and personal time and coverage for...
Workers' comp, military leave.
Military leave and all that. And we came up with total about $97,000 increase to just cover the leaves and vacation time.
A lot of the determination is based upon definition of safe staffing and the reconfiguration of how you achieve that and maintain it. And do you maintain it with increasing in numbers or increasing in overtime with criteria?
Yes. And that's what we looked at.
The only other benefit as well, just to state for the record, is if you have a high overtime budget and you keep the same personnel, the most glaring benefit is there's no pension, there's no added health benefits to your existing crew, retirement, et cetera. I mean, those are the numbers that stay more even over the years. But to me, that's the only benefit you get out of it. But year in, year out, it just, it's getting to approach a number that's, you know, what happens 17, 18? Six hundred thousand's just...
At some point, you reach a threshold.
It's a number that gets a little high.
And, you know, there's two apartment projects out there that are 500 units, potentially. Okay? Because we're not quite sure about whether the southern project is everybody... Okay? And then the other...
Significant one just...
And the other, the other single-family housing projects that are out there, you know, add another 150 residential units.
The south end of the project has a fire station nearby. Like right next door.
Yeah, with one fire engine and one ambulance.
And then you have the Merrimack Hotel property.
Yeah, I'm not, didn't even... That's north end of town.
That's north. That's an unmanned fire station.
I thought you were talking about the south fire station.
Yeah, well, the other thing is, is if, what's his name, Monahan? If that Monahan project gets off the ground, that'll be two years to develop. But if it gets off the ground, yeah, we're looking at... 17, 18, 18, 19, you're looking at, you know, the, you know, you're looking at, yeah, the possibility of increases.
An argument can be made right now that they're already down four. So, it's not far-fetched to say that within three to five years, eight more positions are gonna have to be filled.
I doubt that.
That's just not that crazy. But if you add in all those projects you just mentioned, I just don't think eight, saying eight aloud is crazy. That's all.
All right.
Whether you're four or against it.
Well, you like to be...
But you said you want to be here for three to five years from now.
That's right.
But I think that's, I think that's part of the presentation that we need to get them.
So do I.
This side of the grass.
Right now, to add a new firefighter for each individual, it's about $94,000. Full in cost. For one firefighter is $94,000. That's salary and all his benefits is about $94,000.
So, that's the kind of...
So, that's when we started to look at that.
Is that an average of the firefighters or is...
That is, that is a new firefighter coming in the door. It's about $94,000. That's his uniforms, that's his retirement, that's his, you know, steps, that's...
Right, all the equipment that goes along with that.
Training and...
Training and all that. It's about $94,000.
Police is about the same.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
You don't even count the lost productivity while they get up to speed.
Right. Right, because, and there's a lot of new firemen.
Well, that's...
And there's a...
There's a lot of new people. We saw a lot of retirees.
That's right. That's right.
And the fire department, the fire department will come in and talk to you about a two-year, a two-year learning curve.
I got kicked underneath.
Yeah, it's okay. I am done my formal presentation. I have the... I have the, I have the budgets on a USB drive for everybody. If somebody wants a hard copy budget, I'm trying to be frugal and not print up and kill a lot of trees. The budget right now is about 106 pages long of print. So, I was wondering who would like a hard copy budget?
No, not a hard copy.
Not a hard copy? You're gonna, everybody's gonna get one of these?
Oh, okay.
This is magic.
I do. I gotta, I need a hard copy.
One, two, three. All right.
Once I get used, once I get used to navigating, it's so much better.
All right. So, I'll have, tomorrow, we'll have those budget books ready for you. I apologize. I was hoping that...
I'm not gonna look at it before Christmas. So, take your time.
I was hoping that the entryway to your area would be finished by now. But this project's taken just a little bit longer than I wanted. But let me just explain what's on this little disk. On this little disk is the budget itself. It's fully functional. If you change a number in the town managers column, it will change the tax rate for you. If you want to increase it, it will increase it. If you want to decrease it, it will decrease the budget. It will show you what your actual tax rate is. If you change a revenue number, it will show you what your actual tax rate would be. If you change a revenue number up or down, it's fully integrated and functional. Also, those beautiful sheets that are all the colors, the Christmas tree colors, that's on here too. So, you can actually see how we devise those numbers. Also, the budget schedule's on here. The big thing is January 7th, we kick off the budget meetings here at 6 o'clock, the budget hearings. And that will be DPW, Parks and Rec, and Welfare. That will be the first one. And then the second one, we'll slow down a little bit. We'll do general government, tax collector, assessing, before we bring in police and fire. So, that's where we stand. Everything's on here. If there's something that you want, if there's more detail that you want, if there's history you want, please just ask. We'll get it for, we'll get you whatever you need.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Okay. Next on the agenda, minutes. Minutes of November 5th, 2015.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mayhawn. Any corrections? Yes, Jody?
Thank you, Nancy. Page one, line 46. The pre-application has not been received. Is that correct or should it be the application?
Yeah.
I think it's the, confusing the pre-filing and the application into one word. So, I think pre้าย should be removed. Then on page four of 23. Oh, never mind, that one was, I crossed that out. I apologize. I think that might be it for this one. Let me just check. Oh, no. Seventeen of 23 begins on line 24. She remarked, she gets the impression the town receives a lot of calls and is not equipped to answer. That's not what I said. I asked, I was basically asking what was the issue? Is it the quantity of phone calls? Is that the issue? So, if we could strike that sentence and say she asked if the quantity of calls was the issue. Page 18. Line 15. I believe she should be changed to he because it was Counselor Rothaus's comments. And then line 26.
Just say yes.
That sentence, the assistant town manager, finance director, Paul McCally, stated he would place the item on an agenda for the retreat and on an October 2016 meeting agenda. So, both of those have gone by already. So, I'm not sure, I don't know, Paul, if you remember what date you were talking about?
Well, October's 2016 is next year. And the retreat was for next year.
Oh, for next year. Okay. Got it. Yeah, that's right, 2016. All right. So, that's accurate then. Okay. I was late when I read these. Thank you. Page 20 of 23, line nine. Part of Operation Safe Commute. I believe that should be Merrimack Safeguard. Is that correct or was it, were they discussing Operation? I don't even know what Operation Safe Commute is. I don't remember that at all.
No, I think you're talking about Safeguard.
I thought it was Merrimack Safeguard.
Right, it is.
Yeah. And that's it for me. Thank you.
I have one relatively trivial suggestion.
Yep.
On page four of 23 at line 43, that paragraph without a space between 42 and 43 looks like it should just run on and it doesn't make any sense to do that. And so, if we could put a space in there?
Yep.
It's a lot easier to read.
I agree. Any other suggestions, corrections? Okay. So, we have a motion made by Bill Boyd and seconded by Tom Mayhawn with corrections, right? Yes, Bill?
Would you have, oh, Don, look at line, page 18, line 12. Because I believe, it's gonna be narcissistically self-serving, I apologize. But I think it was actually me that made the comment, not Counselor Rothaus regarding the annual report and the annual meeting. Because I thought I brought that point to light. Unless... Page 18.
Page 18, line 12. Did you or did you not comment?
I mean, I was, I think Bill made that, the comment about the annual report. I was just speaking about... Sorry about that. I think Bill made that report. I made that comment.
So, it should say Counselor, line 12, Counselor Boyd.
Right, because I had spoken...
Previously.
Previous to that.
We all set now?
Yeah. Thank you.
All those, the figures, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Dwyer, Counselor Dwyer's not here at the moment, so it would be 6, 0, 0. And he asked that we wait before we do the next minute so we can just take a breather. He had to leave for a moment.
He has a change, but if anybody else has any changes, we can go on and just wait for him.
Okay, so why don't we start before we actually finish it? We could start any changes.
Move the minutes on 19th.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Tom Mayhawn. Yeah, it'll be the one time we don't. And seconded by Bill. Is that who, was it Bill?
Yes.
Seconded by Bill Boyd. Okay, changes? The one time we don't have changes.
Hey, Bill, did you want to fill some airtime? Meanwhile, back at the campfire.
Does it make sense on page 13 to have a link to something? PowerPoint presentation was provided, it can be viewed here.
Oh, it should have.
Are these gonna be online or something so that that link...
They are online, but still.
That's always been my understanding.
And that's why I sleep.
Should, should, I mean, do we file a paper copy with the clerk or something or... Should things like that actually be attached?
I suspect yes.
There was some, something like that the other day too that kind of surprised me.
There was something else.
What are we doing?
So, maybe it should be redented. We keep the link, but we can include a hard copy for the filing.
Okay.
Yes, we'll leave the link on...
Yeah, leave the link on, online, but they're ought to, when it gets filed, there ought to be a hard copy attached.
Copy of the link.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay, are there any other changes to the minutes of November 19th now that Counselor Dwyer has returned?
On page three of 21.
Yep.
On line 40, Ann stated Kinder Morgan does not want to build this pipeline. I could not have said that because I was, it was in the theme of that's within the business of what they do. If you want to add, Kinder Morgan does... If you want to add, Kinder Morgan does, Kinder Morgan is in the pipeline building. Kinder Morgan-
Construction.
Is in the construction business. I mean, I can't, I can't believe, I can't believe I said the words, Kinder Morgan does not want to build this pipeline, because they do. That's what they, that's what they do. So if you want, if I want to say Kinder Morgan does not want, does not want to build this pipeline, it's not what I said.
I think it's not what you meant, but it is what you said.
So I need to correct it, because it's not what, it's not what I meant. What I need to say is that Kinder Morgan is in the pipeline business, that that's what they do. Because on its surface, it's a contradiction of what I believe. As well as, when you say the letter is deceiving, that sentence makes it sound like Kinder Morgan wants to build this pipeline for profit. It's not acceptable to just say et cetera. I said all kinds of things. You guys said the Sarah Spangle banner was playing in the background as I was speaking. We could have that in there, too.
Does it quote that? That's what I did.
So to just say et cetera really isn't fair as well. The letter is deceiving, that's, that sentence makes it sound like Kinder Morgan wants to build this pipeline for profit. I'll, I'll add this. Of course they want to do it for profit. They are a private enterprise in the business of constructing pipelines.
Can we ask the clerk to go back and review that portion of the meeting?
Sure.
Excellent.
Sure.
When do we do the changes to that? Make the changes to that.
Start a review. In fact, I would also suggest, Dan, you do that as well.
Okay.
Just for your own edification, so when it says et cetera, there should be specifics written for that.
Yeah, because I remember going on, being specific of what it was meant about, saying that Kinder Morgan is in it for profit, and I was like, well, yeah, they're a private company.
But in the meantime, you should review yourself, too.
Okay.
To make sure that the quote is correct. Yeah. Okay.
Even if it means she does a verbatim.
Yeah.
Transcription.
So-
While he was speaking, I was saying-
So until I can get that clarified, can I table it?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. We should, we should table it.
For at least these minutes.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
I'm happy, because then all the specifics can be written.
And she could just say verbatim.
Second to table.
So, so Dan Dwyer's gonna-
Is that what I have to do? I've never done, I've never done it before.
Say it again, Dan, I'm sorry.
Do I ask the, the one who, the woman's, her name's-
Don, Don McMillan.
Do I ask her to print verbatim off the tape?
I think if that's what you want to request, I think we could, right?
Well, either that, or you review the tape and then-
Right. It's easy enough to watch.
Okay.
Which I've done many times, when I've read minutes and don't recollect something or thought I didn't say something, I've gone back and watched it, just to make sure.
Just go with Becky.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Get together with Becky.
Thanks.
So we're going to, first of all, we had a motion already on the table for the approval of the minutes, so why don't we finish that motion and deny it, and then we could do the new-
Or it could be withdrawn.
Oh, withdrawn. Do you want to withdraw, Tom? Okay, we also, now we have another motion from Dan Dwyer, seconded by Tom Nehan, to table.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 9:00.
Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting, I would think, right? I think you're right, Becky is a good-together-upher and chicken. Okay. Comments from the press? No comments. Comments from the public? God bless you for sticking around.
Jim Ferrera, 7:00. So I'll be sleeping on the couch if I don't ask this question, so I know you don't really respond, but if you could try to help me out, that'd be great. Thornton Ferry School, are they going forward with the preschool program?
We don't know.
Or no one knows? I didn't know, ask that last week, which would have been appropriate.
I can help you get in touch with the school district. I don't know. I'm, I'm out officially, so I don't keep track. But I can help you get in touch with somebody who could answer your question.
All right, perfect. And then, lastly, it's not a question, it's just more of a comment. And, you know, I've been attending these for about the last six months, pretty steadily, and I've learned a lot from everybody sitting behind in those chairs, and I really appreciate everything that you guys have done this year, the amount of time that you've put in with the various projects, let alone the KM project, that I know a lot of you guys went to personal meetings, you know, outside of the scope that you guys have signed up for. So I do appreciate it, and I hope I speak for the majority of the residents when I say I really do appreciate all the time you spent with the KM project, as well as all the other projects, and wish each and every one of you a great holiday season, and be safe.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, comments, any other public? No. Okay, comments from the council. Council board.
Thank you. Through you and my colleagues, just a couple of minutes. Thank you for the moment of silence for Steve Maroz. It should be noted that after, after his funeral, the next day was the actual construction of the bridge along the trail in Greater Woods. And his son said, we're gonna go ahead, because that's what my father would want to do. So I think it's a tremendous, tremendous testament of character that Stephen's son, Joseph, proceeded with the, with the actual construction. He could have taken some time and mourned the loss, but, you know, he had a project to complete, he had a mission to complete, and I think, I think Joseph deserves a lot of credit for following through and completing that project. So, again, my condolences to him.
I heard about 45 volunteers shared-
Forty-five. Amazing. Amazing.
I'll finish it.
So, along those lines, Joseph Parker's archery platform is completed. It's visible from Natta Cook Road, and I have to tell you, it looks awesome. It really looks nice coming in both directions, really pops out. It actually kind of, hate to call it a gateway, but it tells you that that Waspin Park is right there and that there's, you know, there's stuff inside there. So it was, it really looks good. I give him a lot of credit, I really do, it came up nice. The other two things I wanted to bring to the council's attention and to the community's attention. The United States Senate Youth Program is a unique educational experience for outstanding high school students interested in pursuing a career in public service. The program is going to be in March of 2016. Two student leaders from each state are nominated, selected, and spend a week in Washington experiencing national government in action. They participate in a bunch of different meetings, they meet cabinet members, Department of Justice, judges, that kind of thing. And it's sponsored by the Hearst Foundation. And each delegate is awarded a $5,000 college scholarship. I'm pleased to announce that Marimac's Jacob Marcus was one of two selected to attend this program and receive a $5,000 scholarship. Jacob is a senior at Marimac High School. And I'm not gonna read the entire letter of recommendation by Principal Ken Johnson, but I would ask that it be entered into the record, because I think it absolutely illustrates the quality of student that Jacob is, but it also is illustrative of the type of, type of kids that we got here in the, in the town of Marimac. I think this is, I just thought this was absolutely amazing that we have one of our own in a very limited competition. He was one of two in this entire state. I think that's absolutely impressive. So I wanted to congratulate Jacob and congratulate his parents, because obviously, behind a, behind a good kid is, is good parents raising him. So congratulations, and good luck down in Washington DC in March. And then lastly, we talk a lot about scouting, but we always seem to never talk about the Explorers Program that's offered through, through the scouting program. And the Daniel Webster Council has been promoting Exploring Now for several years. And they have an award called the William H. Spurgeon III Award, which is given and recognized to an individual who's contributed significant leadership to the Exploring Program. And the Daniel Webster Council's awardee was Marimac's own Christopher Wyman. Chris, as you know, is active with the antique fire truck that we have in town, and he's active with the auxiliary program. He also serves as, as an investigator with the State Fire Marshal's Office as well. So he and his, he and his wife have been very actively involved in the Explorers Program now for well over 10 years. They've put together, they've put together programming for boys that are interested in exploring, focusing on a specific career choice. Obviously, with Chris being active with fire prevention and public safety, that's where his interests have brought him to the Exploring Program. So he was recognized in November for, for the level of leadership in mentoring young boys into fire safety, you know, public, fire prevention, public safety, that kind of thing. So I wanted to recognize Chris for the work that he's done with the program, and want to congratulate him as well for, for winning an award that, you know, was, you know, exemplified the type of leadership that they seek from mentors in the Exploring Program. So, a little bit of a downpoint to start, but some really specific individuals in our community that are contributing their own way, want to make sure that they're recognized for their efforts, so. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year to everybody and to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of quick updates from Conservation Commission. In case people are interested, the project to expand the parking lot at Horse Hill Nature Preserve is moving forward. So if you're out there and you see some changes, it's all authorized, and I think people are going to be really pleased, and hopefully, we're going to take some of the parking off of the street. And it's, there's just tons of people out there all the time, so. And we figured out a way to do this without impacting any wetlands or anything. So that's, that's a real positive. The Conservation Commission is also currently working on a charge for the Horse Hill Nature Preserve Subcommittee. Because we have charges for Greater Woods, we've got something for Wildcat Falls, but Horse Hill Nature Preserve, which is basically the Subcommittee that started all of this, who, they've been around for a long, long time, they don't have the same charge. So they're fine-tuning it, and we're hoping to be consistent across all the subcommittees, which I think is a really good idea. We've had new volunteers come forward for the subcommittees, which is very exciting. They swore in, some people, I think Tom witnessed for the Horse Hill Nature Preserve. We've got people, several people expressing interest in Greater Woods Subcommittee work. So that's very exciting. The Conservation Commission, however, is still in need of volunteers, and I think people are terrified of it. They think you have to know everything before you sign up, and trust me, you do not. And Tim did a great job of talking about the different skillset that all the different commissioners bring to the table. We all have something different that we're good at, and it works as a group together very, very well. So we are, and we meet twice a week. Yes, there are other, I mean, twice a month. Sorry, twice a month. Sorry. There are other outside things that you can do, but again, you can volunteer as much as you have time for or as little. So we need one permanent member, and we still, and we have three alternate positions open. So that's my plug for, we really, really could use some more people that are interested and passionate about conservation land in this town. Marimac does a very, very fine job. When Kinder Morgan was there talking about wetland mitigation, I, after watching the meeting, I got the impression that those representatives thought they were coming to give us a little tutorial about what wetland mitigation is about, and they had no idea how sophisticated Marimac Conservation Commission is, how experienced we are, the financial resources we have, the volunteer man-hours that this town puts into their conservation land, which is so valuable to us. So if you're interested, come check us out, come to a few meetings. They're public, and we would love to have more people participate. Thank you.
Looks like you want to say something, Phil.
Very quickly, just a clarification first. Earlier this evening, it was mentioned that the entire council had been opposed to the pipeline. And I'm not opposed to a pipeline running through our country. I was opposed to the locations that were chosen and spoken of in Marimac. That was my concern. So I, I recognize infrastructure needs and so on, and so I just wanted to be clear on that. And more importantly now, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody, to my fellow counselors, and to the community at large. Thank you.
Okay. Is that on that? Tom?
Yeah, I attended the quarterly NRPC Commissioners Meeting last night. It was a nine, a nine or 10 on an agenda. There was a presentation by a resident of Hollis about the Hollis Energy Committee, what they're doing, they're going to be using wood pellet. They're using wood pellet stoves in some of their town buildings, furnaces. They're planning on putting in, that's pretty sophisticated. They're planning on putting in a, heating some of the schools with a wood chip generation facility. Well, they're proposing this. When I heard the number, I think it would even give Hollis pause. But, and so did some of the other people in the commission, when they were start talking about the number, but it's a pretty ambitious project. Probably that'll eventually get funded. They may get, they, it could get done this year. But it's pretty, it's pretty interesting what they're, what they're, what they're hoping to do. The NRPC Bicycle Pedestrian Plan was accepted, and there was considerable discussion about bicycle and pedestrian access throughout the region, particularly some of the work that's being done in Nashville, which has a lot more compact area to deal with. And one of the things that was brought up was the South Eagan River Trail that we're going to be funding. This newsletter, which is the program highlights, is on NRPC's website. They talked about helping to develop a map, a GIS map, with, on the project. So there's a very nice map that they've put together that'll be available when that project, once that project gets underway in the spring. The other thing I wanted to mention, after all of this, there was an Energy Facilities Advisory Committee update on the work that they've been doing. They're still in there, data gathering, data resource mode, you know, and they will be probably bringing additional information to the commissioners at the Commissions Meeting in March regarding, regarding their, their work. So, the thing that I wanted to talk about was, we've heard a lot here at the table tonight about different things. We've heard about the Horse Hill Nature Preserve, we've heard about Waspin Park, we've heard about the Conservation Commission volunteers and committees and whatnot. And isn't it great that we have the ability to do this, and we have these facilities and these amenities, if you will, available to the community? It's something we've been working on for a long time to try and get done, and all of a sudden, it's all coming together. That critical mass is there, and these things are getting, it's awful to have the problem of, you gotta build a bigger parking lot, so people can walk on the 540 acres behind my house. Okay? It's really a horrible problem to have, you know? And they were taking a lot of, when they were talking about the parking lot, they were taking a lot of the lessons that they learned about the parking lot we put in this year at Waspin Park, and how that was helping them to think about materials and some of the things that they could use, low-cost, no-cost things that they could use in order to take care of that parking lot. So those kinds of connections and things are there. It's really working to the advantage of the residents of the town. And it's really offering a lot of opportunities for people to really, you know, get to know each other and to, and to take advantage of the trails and things that we have that we have in the community. I thought it was really cool.
All right, good. Thank you, Tom.
I just want to say Happy Holidays to everybody, have a great end of the year and a good upcoming New Year. Thank you.
I get last one? You're all set?
Actually, I'm the last one, but go with me.
I would like to clarify, too, because apparently there are people in town that don't know where I stand, so I kind of echo Finley's concerns from day one. I am for pipelines in America, I've been for infrastructure in America, as well as New Hampshire. But what I like to think is, my voting and my words have also been united on the council on, from Kinder Morgan from day one, that it be done right, that we oppose it from being in our nature preserves, that we oppose it from being in our wellhead protection areas, and that we make sure that we hired a lawyer and made sure everything was done in place. So I can get a little bent out of shape when accusations fly about where my loyalties lie. I would think my loyalties lie on the record and the votes that we've taken for almost a year now. So, just wanted to end it on that, that as far as energy in America, I'm all for it. I like to stop buying from foreign sources and overseas, even when a solar project that came up on this- came up on this council regarding Penchuk, we tried to do everything we could, bend over backwards to see if we could make it work, it didn't work, but this council has always taken Marimac first, and I like to think that that's what we've been doing here, so thank you.
Okay, okay, last but not least, I just very simply, I want to wish Happy Holidays to all of our citizens and my peers, and if you're gonna travel, please travel safely, and I guess I'll see you next year.
With luck.
With luck.
We won't have anything come up, they'll all have to get together.
Yeah, well, okay, that's what you mean.
Yeah.
With luck, we won't need to meet. Motion to adjourn, Dan Dwyer.
Second.
Tom, Tom Mayhend. All those in favor? No names, okay, seven, zero, zero.